Welcome to the July 16, 2024 Planning Board Meeting and General Meeting. And for those of you at home, these proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. If we could all pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Gasky will be on his way. Tonight, the first thing we're going to take a look at on our agenda is an A and R. This plan has been prepared for the purpose of creating Parcels A, B, C, and D, which by themselves are not to be considered as buildable lots under current zoning. New lots number one and two assesses map 18 lots 2-1 and 2-2 and located at 199 Plymouth Street in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. Do we have anybody to speak on behalf of that? If you could speak into the mics so that we can hear, we have somebody taking minutes for us and they just need to hear your name clearly.
Great.
Yeah, and if I may just make that editorial comment that I'll probably make again each time you come up to the mic because our mean taker is remote, please identify yourself, even if you just did it like two minutes ago last time you spoke.
Okay.
So if you're here, you're fine, but if you go away and you come back, just keep saying, "This is me."
Okay. Excellent. I'm Deborah Silva. I reside at 199 Plymouth Street. I own 199 Plymouth Street along with my husband Jeffrey, who is here tonight. We've been there for 30 years and we, not so recently, maybe 10 years ago, inherited 199A Plymouth Street. 199A Plymouth Street sits on just about two acres and had a condemned home on it that needed to be torn down, which was painstakingly expensive because it was asbestos and had to be hauled away in burlap bags and covered in plastic. But either way, we eventually got it done a few years ago and with the goal of building another home next door for, or having our son build a home next door. We recently realized that while we own 199 and 199A, 199B is owned by a relative who owns the bog. And he got permitting to extend and practically double the size of his water hole and wound up encroaching upon our property by 40 some odd feet. And I don't know how many feet the other way, but pretty sizable. So when we were looking at what we were going to do with this land at 199A, we realized that this had happened and in discussions with the cousin, he agreed to give up his frontage, which is good for us. And in return, we would give him an easement for the water hole that he has taken over. So we submitted some thoughts. We reached out to local engineer. He came down, looked at everything, threw some plans together. And so basically, we're not looking to establish a new lot. I guess it's how you look at it. It's an existing lot. We're just moving lines. While we're moving the lines and we're adding frontage to the bog side, as you can see, we are extending our frontage to show what's an existing driveway so that we then have access to outback to eventually put a structure back there. So the goal of this is really immediately to get this land kind of cleaned up a little bit. This is old family land, which is usually, this is what usually happens. It's not very attractive by the time it's, you know, 100 years in the family. It's been cut up a million different ways, but that's what we're looking to do. And just to clarify, it is, it was at the time when we inherited the property, it was a buildable lot. It actually had a building on it with a well and a driveway.
All right, then. Well, I'm going to ask my board members if they have any concerns about bringing this up to the size that you need to bring it up to and extending it for the purpose of, it was for, you're swapping for, say that again.
So we're giving the cousin an easement to a large swath of land outback that he is currently using for his bog. In return, he's giving us the frontage, which is the funky-looking triangle that's attached to the bog.
Okay.
I have a question. How did he manage to build on your, get approval to build on your property?
I would love that answer. He got the permits. I can tell you that. He went through the proper channels. He doesn't, yeah, he doesn't cut corners.
Sure.
Yeah.
I also don't see any of the building lines on here, setbacks, side setbacks or anything.
No, we haven't, we haven't even gotten so far as to pick out the home. What we're trying to do first is establish the lots, like just get our lines cleaned up. Then the next step is going to be to choose the home, have the engineer place it in the property in a manner that it would be approved and then submit that.
Yep. It's just a requirement of the approval-not-required processes to put down the building lines where your setbacks, side, front, and various other setbacks. I'm just making note of that.
Okay.
I'm also going to make note that no clearing should be done within the 100-foot wetland buffer without approval through the Conservation Commission by submission of-
Absolutely. Yep.
An A and O I. Other than that, I don't have any issues with this.
Mr. Delong, I'm going to ask if you have any concerns.
Not at this time.
Ms. Williams.
I'm just curious, who owns Parcel D?
Parcel D, which is outback.
No, no, the one right on Plymouth Street.
In the back.
Oh, D?
Yeah, D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So D is in back. That is not, that was sold a long time ago. So if you can put the pointer on where you're referring to as D, I'm thinking where 199, next door is 199A.
Above your lot, Parcel D. See it above yours?
It's where, it's where the line is now, it's where the arrow is now?
Yes.
Oh, we own that. So that's, yeah, so it's just, it, it's the way the engineer kind of drew it out just to kind of clean.
Okay. So we created its own little parcel there.
Yeah.
It should be noted that Parcels A, B, C, and D are not to be considered buildable lots.
That would not exclude them from being buildable lots. They'll be added to-
No, they could be added to-
It just means that you're not approving them for building at this time, correct?
If they were added to another lot, then that would give them the sufficient frontage or area space.
Yep.
To get you up to speed, we have an approval-not-required. It should be the first thing in the packet. And we are pretty much all wrapping it up and I'm asking Del if he has any questions or concerns and then give you a minute to get up to speed, John, ask for your input.
So if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So these are two existing lots right now. So we're reconfiguring the lot lines and that's essentially what's here. There's frontage for both of them on a public way. They're perfectly appropriate for the board to endorse as an A and R plan. We're not creating a new lot. We're just moving lot lines around on two existing lots.
Kyle, you asked about the 100-foot buffer because right now it's a 65-foot wetland buffer.
No, no, I'd see the 100-foot buffer on there, but if, with the building line setbacks and everything, you'd be able to know where the house was going to be built because the building line setbacks on there, any work done on this property inside the 100-foot buffer has to get abbreviated notice of intent through the Conservation Commission. That includes removing vegetation, cutting down trees, clearing land.
The intent is for the, the home to basically be where the other house was. And I think ultimately, I think what we've been discussing, what makes sense is probably to hook up to town water because we have that, we are the line.
If there was a house, if there was an existing house there, do you know if there was a well?
There is a well.
There is a well?
Yep. It hasn't been used and I think that home's been, before it was tore down, it was condemned for maybe 20, good 20 years.
All right.
And it's been, it was taken down maybe four or five years ago.
Would it be too much trouble if you could just have Mr. Bott point out where, could you like maybe tell him where that house, that dwelling was, the one that was raised?
It's probably where the word "area" is.
Give me a second, I'll see if I can bring it up on our GIS.
Oh.
I'm just buying a little bit of time for Mr. Gasky to take a chance to look at this as well, but we might as well find out where it was.
There you go.
Especially since it was such a cost to you to remove.
So this on the GIS shows building footprints and I'm going to assume that that box right there is likely where the house was at because this data is a few years old.
Just felt like she said on the, on the word "area."
Yep.
All right, Mr. Gasky.
I'm just trying to see exactly where on Plymouth Street, on Plymouth Street this is.
Right down the street from Lacy and Arrowhead. It's on the screen right now.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, there it is now. Okay. And the buffer zones are in place and everything?
We're set.
Since this is an approval-not-required, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to accept this. I will make a motion to accept the A and R of 199 Plymouth Street, creating Parcels A, B, C, and D, which are to be considered non-buildable, and lots one and two, which meet all the requirements.
Thank you.
All set?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
So we got a motion and a second.
A motion and, yeah, I think I want to second it in.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just need a vote.
All right. Excuse me?
We just need a vote.
Yes. We don't, not a special permit, so we'll start with John.
I will abstain on this one.
All right.
I will vote aye.
I vote for aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right.
All right. If it's not too much trouble, I'm going to take things out of order and ask that we discuss the request for an extension for special permit in site plan review, Galehead Development, two at Pond, three solar project at Zero Meadow Street, map 82, Lot 1-A, and 1-3, zoning district residential agricultural.
Yep.
Thank you. And state your name.
Kyle Murphy with Galehead Development.
All right, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I just submitted another request for an extension of our site plan approval because we're just not ready to get a building permit yet at this time. However, recently, I guess, because I was here last year to request an extension as well, and you know, the reason we've been requesting all these extensions is because the interconnection of the project has been delayed by certain upgrades that Eversource needs to make, needs to make to allow our project to interconnect. They've been waiting for approval from the DPU for a while now and in June, they were finally approved. So the thing that's been holding up this project for the last several years, because we've got, it's been, I think, four years maybe now since it was initially approved, you know, we now have certainty that the project will be moving forward. Eversource is, you know, starting to procure and just plan for the construction of the upgrades that are needed, but it could take them a few years to do that, which is why we need the, the extension again.
Do you know when you last came here for, your last extension?
Yeah, I mean, it was last summer. I don't remember the exact meeting it was at.
May 9, 2023.
Have we, we've changed that to two years in this?
Well, I would say that it's not unusual for an applicant to come in and ask for a two-year extension and for the board to grant a one-year extension based on the uncertainty of what might happen over two years.
How does, how does the board feel about another one-year extension or, I mean-
Typically, that's what-
Typically, Eversource has been tying all these projects up. So we should go one year at a time then. I'll ask each of you how you feel about that.
That sounds good.
John?
I'd like to hear a little bit more about what's going on with the project before I comment anything.
Yeah, definitely. Earlier this year, we also, because we have a kind of option-to-lease agreement with the landowner right now, that was going to expire this year and we just, earlier this year, extended that land agreement as well because we've been, you know, communicating with the landowner as well because you have to extend our agreement with them. And our landowner was totally on board to extend for another year. And yeah, I guess I think that, you know, with the certainty we have now, knowing that these upgrades will be completed, there's really nothing to prevent this project from moving forward at this point. We just need to, you know, start building.
Has any construction started on it at all?
None at all, no. Because Eversource has up to four years to build all of the upgrades. That being said, they're going to do like a phased process of interconnection. So once the, once the specific upgrades are complete, some projects will be able to connect and then, so it's possible that we could connect in less than four years, but that's like the maximum amount of time that it might take. So we're just not aware of Eversource's construction schedule yet, so we don't want to spend a bunch of money building the project when it could potentially be waiting one or two or three more years for Eversource to finish, which is why we haven't started building it yet. We just want to have more clarity on, you know, is it going to be two years or is it going to be four years for Eversource to complete the upgrades? We're just not sure about that yet. So we're kind of just, you know, extending our agreements and waiting for Eversource to figure out their construction schedule and communicate that with us just so that we can time the construction of our project to be coordinated with when they're doing these upgrades so we don't have a bunch of solar panels just sitting out there not producing energy.
When do you expect to hear back from Eversource?
We're not going to know their construction schedule probably until next year at the earliest.
I can't imagine that. I mean, if they're, if they've gotten approval, I'm sure they've already got their construction schedule established. I mean, they've been working on, they've been working on this longer than you have.
Yeah.
No, we're not voting yet, so I, I'm not too sure yet. I don't really, not a fan of all the, the, now that everything's approved, everybody still doesn't have a plan on what they're going to do. So that's my thoughts on it. I have a hard time with a two-year extension.
Well, we're, we're going with a one-year right now.
Okay.
So, and they have made it clear that it's an Eversource concern as far as tying into the system, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Well, I think, I think it's one of those things that we should, now that this has been approved, we should consider meeting with Eversource again and having them explain what's going on. They were very beneficial the last time they came. Might be, might be very enlightening again.
Mr. Bott, would, would something like that look like as far as getting them to explain present projects that are going on that are still being held up?
I'll check with our community resource person from Eversource and ask if they can come to the board's meeting on August 13th. Then our next scheduled meeting.
All right, then. Well, then I'm going to look for a motion to, to extend this for another year.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan review for Galehead Development, Zero Meadow Road, Snap Twoit, Snappa Twoit Solar Project till August 31st, 2025.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Who do we want to go, you want me to go with Mary Ellen?
Go ahead.
Okay. Mary Ellen, second that. And I will take, I-
John Gasky says aye.
Aye.
Owen Sidillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. All right.
Thank you.
And as soon as you can get back to us, that would be really good to let us know what's going on.
Like construct, our construction?
Any kind of information that you can bring forward as far as getting in touch with Eversource.
Yeah.
You know, to-
Yeah, I will do that.
-get an idea of what's going on because it's hard for us to keep extending all of these projects without us not knowing as well what's going on.
Right, I understand. I do, I have, I was inquiring with Eversource before, ahead of this meeting just to see if they know when our project will be able to interconnect and, you know, they don't know yet, but I guess I can share that correspondence with you all. Don't be shy.
As long as you-
Yeah, right. Just keep saying anything.
This guy's, this guy's phone is, is open and willing to take any information that you can pass along for your sake as well.
Yeah.
You know, as far as the project's concerned.
Yep, no, that makes sense. I'll, I'll be in touch as we know more.
All right. Thank you. All right. And I believe most of us are here for is on the application of Derek Barley requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Calver zoning bylaw located at 278 Tremont Street in Calver, Mass. Assessors map 126-25-0-R, Lot 1 revised in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District to construct a duplex.
Yes, good evening. My name is Steve Kautowski from Webby Engineering and this is Alan Diaz. Would you like to introduce yourself, Alan?
Alan Diaz, Halifax.
If you could.
Sure. So I'll just go over some of the changes that were made on the, the first lot that we're going to be presenting before you this evening on Safet Road. We had initially had a similar layout with the duplexes as shown kind of in the center of the lot. We were asked to provide some additional information to, to, just to make sure that we weren't in conflict with your town stormwater requirements. So we, we put a disturbed area notation on the plan of 23,000 square feet. So we would be required to file, file for individual stormwater permits, I believe, if we were over 40,000 square feet. So we're just under that with the limit of the removal of any vegetation or disturbance to the lot. We also wanted to demonstrate that we were in compliance with the fire department's regulations for the duplex and, and we didn't have it delineated on the previous plan, but on this plan, we're showing that we have the access way into the duplexes is 22 feet wide. We were also asked to add some spot grades to show what the drainage does out at the road. And so we showed some centerline spot grades that show that basically the, the road is relatively flat. And the proposed activity from about 70 feet in from the, from the roadway will also remain flat. So we don't expect to see any, any runoff from the proposed site into Safet Road. The other thing that we changed, again, this is kind of a minor detail, was on the original plan, we were proposing two separate wells. They were a duplex, so we thought two wells was kind of made more sense, but we are changing that now to just have one well for the, for both dwellings. Another change that we did, again, just sort of more of an aesthetic thing is, is to stagger the, the buildings. So instead of having them with one solid wall going across the rear of the, the buildings, one solid foundation wall, we staggered it about three feet, moving one of the buildings a little bit closer towards the road, sliding the other one backwards. And we just changed a little bit of the grading, again, trying to be a little more considerate with where the water was going to flow off of site. We wanted to keep everything kind of traveling in the way that the water patterns are going right now. So essentially, everything kind of slopes away from the road towards the rear and that's kind of the way it's going to continue, with the exception of obviously, there's going to be two dwellings in the middle of the lot. And so everything will continue to shed towards Crane Brook in the back, you know, in that direction as it already is. There's, there is a, a little bit of a knob that's kind of in the back of the, the property, but that's beyond any of the limit of work. We're not going into that area and touching any of that. A couple other things we just wanted to point out, we're changes on the plan is, is we're delineating an area of tree cutting along the property lines. As you're probably aware, in Calver, a lot of those large white pines are, you know, prevalent and, and sometimes, once you do these construction projects, they can be a hazard to the, the new house that's being built and sometimes to the abutting property. So in this case, we, we considered the location of those trees and we denoted on the plan that anything that's larger than 15 inches in diameter will be cut just again for preventing any future problems. And, but we are maintaining the, the majority of the tree line that's, that's there, that's kind of shown on, on the plan. So I think those are the only changes to the plans. Alan, is there anything that you wanted to add that-
No, we just want to point out that-
Alan, could you tell them who you are?
Alan Diaz from Halifax.
Thank you.
The, we just want to point out that the project does meet all Title V standards. You know, this is going to be four-bedroom unit. We anticipate that there's going to be two cars per unit, so it's going to be a little increase in traffic of four cars. We are going to be putting wells in based on the data that we've come up with. Wells are going to be approximately 20 feet deep. The zone of influence on them wells will be about 10 feet, so it shouldn't really impact any of the neighborhood wells. And again, with our edge and loading, four bedrooms, we're not putting that much back into the soils. We do plan on keeping the, the natural vegetative buffer. As Steve had mentioned, there are some very large pines in that area. The houses themselves, the proposed house is going to be 73 feet from C50. So that's going to be fairly well back. Fright is going to be cleared. They'll be putting some shrubs and trees to, to dress the area up. Having listened to the meeting, we, we're listening to what the neighbors' concerns are and hopefully we've addressed those.
There's only one other thing I just wanted to point out that I failed to mention was is that all of the proposed work is outside of any jurisdictional boundary line for conservation. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't impacting any of the, the resource areas or any of the buffer zones. So we're well ahead of the outer riparian zone from, from the Crane Brook by quite a ways to the proposed house and probably at least 30 feet, an additional 30-foot buffer to the proposed tree line. at least 30 feet, an additional 30-foot buffer to the proposed tree line.
It might help to explain what you're using for septic system for, for the public?
Sure, it's, it's just standard septic system. We do have to meet, the town of Carver has a minimum square footage, I believe it's 800 square feet. So, there'll be individual septic tanks for each one of the dwellings, and an individual leaching field sized on the, there were perk tests that were done by another engineering firm. We do have some of the locations, but it's our company policy, we usually, if we're working on a project, we, we like to do our own soil testing. So, if everything is, all the other permits are granted, the special permits and things like that, then we'll, we'll proceed with digging holes in the area where we've delineated where the leaching areas are gonna be, just so that we can provide those locations with our septic designs to the Board of Health.
Have you met and discussed with the Board of Health?
We, we had, we had just done the initial request for the, the soil logs that were available down at the Board of Health. We, we had prepared our septic system design plans based on those initial septic, the results from those. And then we realized that some of the locations may conflict with where we wanted to build. You know, again, I think those were more preliminary observation holes that were done by another company. So, some of them are, you know, were done in the front of the lot where we're proposing our well, but we're obviously gonna be not putting the, the septic system there. We're gonna put them in the, in the back of the houses. So, again, some of them will have to be perked again, that we, in, in different locations.
And you were gonna, there were gonna be two wells, but now you're going with one well?
Yeah, yeah. I believe all the, originally, we were proposing two wells, but I think to assure any concerns that we were, you know, adding more stress to the aquifer, that we were just proposing the one well, that we'd share that, you know, that, that wellhead and have two separate lines probably coming, you know, a split basically to, to each one of the dwellings from one wellhead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a question for our town engineer regarding the well. I asked Mr. Bott this earlier today. Depending on the depth of the well, I was wondering if it would have any impact on the wells in the area. So, I myself would like to get to, to the bottom of that, to find out what the answer is on that, because I don't know how far down you have to go to get potable water.
If I could, Alan Diaz, I did, we did some, I did some research with my well driller. There are no wells the DEP has logged for Seepit Street. There are wells logged for Tremont Street. Depth of groundwater is about eight feet normally. The depth of those wells are anywhere from 15 to 20 feet. We're proposing wells that are gonna be probably 20 feet or deeper, which should have no effect on the aquifer. You know, Crane Brook is a great aquifer there. So, we think with that depth, as long as we're getting, you know, we get into sands and good soils, because we do, we do need to have an adequate amount of flow for our fire prevention systems. So, we're gonna have the one well, we'll have tanks in each basement for our fire prevention, and then we also need to feed them. So, based on the data that we've reviewed, we should have no problem at all with wells. I'm gonna anticipate 20 feet deep, 20 to 25.
For the well for water or for the well for the sprinkler system?
The well for the sprinkler system and the water are one well. They're gonna be separate utility, separate utility service to that. That'll go into the structure, it'll go to the fire. They want tanks in the basement, so they'll go into the tanks for the fire prevention, and then they'll continue to go into the house.
Okay. I think I would feel comfortable knowing from our engineer that it wouldn't have an impact on the wells and the rest of the wells in the area. I don't want that to be a detriment to the neighbors abutting this property.
We, I got the, the data from the DEP website, so...
Okay. All right. I, I'm gonna turn some questions over to my board and then open it up to the public at this time.
I'm just wondering if things have changed with the fire department, where they disapproved this, as far as the road going on, you know?
I'm not sure they disapproved. I think they wanted more clarification on the, on the width, which we've addressed, and, and I think the, the issues that were brought up for the fire prevention, those, my app, the, my clients, the applicants, will work out with the fire department. They've been in, as Alan had just said, they've, they've been researching and, and whatever requirements that the fire department will have, they'll, they'll meet those requirements. So, they're not, we're not objecting to putting sprinklers in the buildings. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure that the fire department's satisfied with what they come up with for a, you know, for an answer to that concern.
I see 49, oh, I'm sorry, Tony.
Oh, we gotta do a site walk?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And my map that was provided tonight is the same map that was provided last meeting. It's, it's not the same as that. If I could get a copy of that by the, uh, site walk would be great.
So, the four maps that are in your book are all current?
No, not this one that's on top, and I don't believe...
I have nice square lines, no circular lines.
No, I don't have anything like that.
Mr. Bott, would you like to take a look at this?
Sure.
I, I do respect what Tony's trying to say. This is what we have opposed to that.
So, yeah, map Lot 1, those have been revised, but map 1 was not. So, that is the, what we've got on the P E F.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought the packet that we got has that new map on top.
So, just this one?
Yep, the other three are the revised plan.
So, unfortunately, I have to wear two pairs of glasses, and what are the, I'm looking for the building to the lot sides. What is it?
51.2.
It was 49.2, so you brought it up so that it was over 50, correct?
Yeah, I think it was also just because of the, once we pushed one, one side of the building a little closer, it, it gave us a little bit more room to kind of balance out the setback to the sidelines. We've got, you know, that was kind of what we were attempting to do, is have kind of equal distance from one side to the next, so, and, and to maintain 50 feet.
All right. I think I took pretty good notes last week regarding the public's concerns. So, I think since you are here as the engineers, on behalf of this, I might let them, you know, ask their questions. I did hear two of the concerns that we had last week regarding the clearing of the, the trees on the site and the septic systems. So, I just wanted to make sure that we do get all their concerns, and where you're here tonight, you weren't on the last meeting. So...
Kim, may I just ask a question?
Oh, I'm still not done with us. I just wanted to let them know what was going on. So, we can jump to you, that's fine.
Hi there. Just a question for you. Is it absolutely necessary to remove all the pine trees that are over 15 inches in diameter?
I'm gonna say yes. They're...
Why?
They're, they're, some of them are over 100 feet.
Yeah.
And then, once you start clearing the rest of the vegetation for the house, the impact from the winds could very well topple those trees. They could impact the structure that they're building.
I would disagree with that to a point, because I think the smaller trees are gonna topple faster than the larger trees.
Well, I think when we, when we looked at it, we've got some stuff out there that's 24, 28 inches round. And it would, if we got a bad storm, it could impact the neighbors. So, the plan would be, anything that's gonna impact, we would remove. If the board so is concerned, we don't mind replacing those trees. We wouldn't stump it, we'd cut the trees. We don't mind replacing those trees with some reeds and spruces, cypress-type trees, or trees that are gonna grow, grow fairly quickly, but are not gonna be falling on some wooden structure if there's a massive windstorm.
Okay.
And that's the only reason. It's expensive to take the trees...
I just think the whole area, that Seepit Street, and the, the plan still says Seepit Road, but it should be Seepit Street. I think that, that whole neighborhood is private. They love the trees. I think they probably love the trees, you know, and so you're gonna be affecting other people's, you know, houses and lots and such, and, and the privacy, I'm sure, is a big thing, too. So, if you get rid of the larger trees, then you're left with smaller trees, and they wanna replant things, those, those aren't gonna grow that big, right?
Our proposal would be to remove the larger pines. There's a lot of maple vegetation that's left and some other scrub brush. We would leave that. We'd leave at least a minimum, with the duplex, we'd leave at least 25 feet. And just remove the larger trees that could potentially impact the structures.
I don't think you have to, but that's just my recommendation.
Again, we're not opposed to replanting another vegetative line somewhere at the 25 feet. So, that separates these, the new proposed structure from all the neighbors. But there is, it's a fair amount of vegetation that's currently on the lot. So, I think that once you get those trees, those, those pines out of there, that would really take off.
Okay.
And they'd have their privacy. And, you know, our setbacks are 50 feet, so we still have plenty of room.
Right.
Plus, don't they get a lot of shade from those trees? And, you know, I don't want it to be a wind tunnel either.
No, we've got plenty in the back to prevent the wind tunnel. The only reason to take the pine trees is the safety of the structures. That's it. Now, their expenses to take out. So, if, if they're not gonna impact that dwelling and the neighbors' dwellings, we would leave them. But our experience has been, is once you open up an area, those pines could be susceptible to normal. It's, it's a great expense, but we don't wanna create, we don't wanna create a risk.
But I know for a fact that once you get rid of the larger ones, the smaller ones become a little bit more vulnerable to being blown down. So, they're just as bad going on someone's house as a large one is.
But they were maple and an oak, so...
So, you're proposing to take down all pines?
Those pines that are 15 inches and above, and we could mark those potentially because, it's because of the height.
Well, you're in self-Carver, so, there you go.
Yeah, I, I would have to, I would have to argue about the height, because I know around my house, I have lines of trees on property lines that are all 75 foot plus. And I've been here for almost 10 years in that house, and I have barely lost a branch through all the storms and everything else where other places have, have lost smaller trees. So, I think it's more about the root structure, and pulling up those, pulling up those larger trees messes up, messes with the root, root structure and the stability of the rest of the trees. So, I, I agree with Ms. Williams over here that, and I think we have a, part of the bylaws is to mark the larger trees and to minimize the removal of the larger trees, anything over 10 inches in caliper. Am I correct?
No.
Yes.
So, the bylaws that pertain to identifying trees over a certain caliper or subdivision regulations, these are air and oil lots, so they are not composed of subdivisions.
All right, that...
The requirements for screening and other trees and things like that, those are requirements of site plan. And because these are two-family dwellings, they're not subject to site plan review either.
Okay. Well, it seems to me like we're splitting hairs on something like that, that we require marking large trees for one type of project, but somebody else comes in and the, we're governing what's happening at the, for the construction of it and ignoring the removal of the same thing.
These are what your regulations and your bylaws are?
I, I get it. I get it. I'm not telling them that it's against the law.
I think we'd be, Alan Diaz, I think we, we'd be amenable to go out, mark the trees that we think are the most dangerous and, and make a decision based on that. Like I say, anything within the 25, that'll only be pines.
So, the other thing that, the other thing that I have with regards to the wells, I noticed there seemed to be a lot of discussion about concerns about wells being affected with all the new construction and everything. Has anybody considered going more like an Artisan well or something like that, going considerably deeper, so that it's not taking specifically from the aquifer, but maybe from a lower water source?
Alan Diaz, to answer that, I think the costs that are associated with the, the rock wells, they get very expensive. So, if you've got a, and they're basically in a rock, so they're gonna have to be treated. So, at least with these, they're gonna be gravel-packed wells. They're gonna be much easier to filter. Your backwash systems aren't gonna be expensive. But once we start digging, if the well guy doesn't find anything at 20 or 25 feet, then he's gonna keep going. So, based on what we've seen in the area, the data, we think we're all gonna get shallow wells. And we're hoping they're gonna be 20, 25 feet, and you'll get better filtration. We're finding that, that from the data, that most of the wells that are on Tremont are 10 to 12 feet deep.
Okay.
So, we're gonna be below that.
The question that I have then on these homes, are these homes gonna be listed as Massachusetts Affordable Homes? Is this all gonna, is this all gonna be affordable housing, or...
No, I'll answer that. No, this is not a 40B, this is gonna be...
I'm not talking about 40B, I'm just talking about being, being affordable homes.
Or is this gonna be, is this gonna be, these gonna be like top fair market value type
homes?
I would say fair market value. The owner plans on retaining all of the four lots. There's a future investment. Obviously, they'll go for market value for whatever the rents are. Then they're not gonna be affordable to any degree as far as, I mean, he could choose to, to accept vouchers as payment. That's a decision they'd have to make.
What about that house?
Something you could go for, though.
The home, the home that's there?
This is a different lot.
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong lot.
It's okay, we're on one right now. We are gonna take a look at a site plan, but something that may wanna consider bringing the house farther back so that we could possibly get a little more room from taking down the larger pines. But I don't know if you're gonna be able to, because then it becomes an issue with the wetlands, correct?
I, I think we've got, we've got some room to work. I mean, we could probably push it back another 20 feet if that's a concern for the board or any of the abutters, if they think that that'll give them a little bit more privacy in screening. I don't think that's unreasonable. Clients are shaking their head, they don't think, think that's too bad. Like I said, we, we've got some room to move it back if that's a concern that the, the board would feel more comfortable with that. 20 feet would be fine, maybe, maybe 30, just to, seems just, we've got enough room. We just leave the leaching fields where they are, move the structures and the tanks further south. Shouldn't, shouldn't be a big problem at all.
If I might make a recommendation, we should do a site walk.
We are gonna make it.
Before we discuss.
Can you folks just pull your mics a little closer, because I can hardly hear you, and I know that Mary Ann's probably struggling as well.
We should go and check out the site. I mean, it, it might be all pine trees around it, so we, we should get a better feel for, for what we're looking at.
All right. Well, we did have him bring their engineers here so that we could ask them some questions and discuss the concerns that we had in the public. So, that's why I wanted to go over that. I was hoping that they could answer some of the questions that we have. And maybe we could all come up with some, some ideas how to meet in the middle for both of them. But site walk regarding the trees, we can add as well. And I believe other concerns were the, on this particular lot was, if anybody could help me, we got the septic, the well, the trees.
Traffic.
Traffic.
Traffic. So, this is the only one that's on Seepit, correct? The thing with the traffic is that, how many rooms, again, did you say? You said four. You said four, but does that mean two bedrooms on each or four bedrooms on each?
Just two bedrooms on each unit.
I see a three.
I'm sorry, do I have the wrong plan?
Three bedrooms per side.
Okay. Three bedrooms per side, all right. So we're looking at an additional four cars for, for traffic on a one-way road. That was our other concern. Well, as far as Lot 1 is concerned, I think we should probably take a look at the site plan. Take a look at doing a site walk so that we can be assured that what we're going to have, we're going to ask for the lines of the buildings to be staked and the four corners. I don't think we need the four corners, probably three corners, right?
If I may?
Yes, please.
So what I was going to suggest for the site walk, if the applicants could stake the area of disturbance. That way, when we go out to see the site, we know where the area of disturbance is going to be. And that would be a condition of the special permit. Because the special permit is predicated on the fact that they're saying we are not going to disturb more than an acre of land. The total area disturbed on this lot is 23,000 square feet. So when they stake that area out, that condition that I would propose for the special permit says, no disturbance outside of the area that's staked. So we'll see where the site's at to be disturbed and limit the area of clearing to the site to that. So stake them both before we get out there.
Sure. Would it be, I just wanted to clarify, should we stake it at, try to move the proposed houses back? Would that make more sense? Or would you like to see it where it sits currently on the plan?
So.
I know we're talking about the disturbance area, but I was actually going to suggest, since we're going to have the guys out there anyway staking limits of disturbance, we could stake the two, just, you know, just so you have an idea where the front of the dwellings are going to be, the two outer corners of the proposed buildings, too. Just to give you two stakes of reference where the, where the structures are going to sit, too.
Well, that was my thinking down the road suggestion, but I would refer to the rest of my board, whether they would like to have the dwelling, the disturbed area staked or maybe a possibly better area proposed to be staked.
I think the disturbed area in the front two lot lines, the driveway and the buildings, where they stand on the plan, currently as it is, we're already looking at a lot more impervious surface due to the wider roads and the extra parking and everything. And I'm not so sure that adding more impervious surfaces is going to be beneficial considering that it, it's already being proposed at twice what it would typically normally be.
That's why I have a board to ask these questions to. Ellen, you feel the same?
I feel exactly the same.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to ask for the disturbed areas to be staked. And what Mr. Bott said, curb cut as well.
And so I start from Connie. The four corners of the building, the disturbed area and the center line of the driveway?
And the, the front two lots, front two lot lines on Sebit Street.
At this time, I'm going to ask you guys to step away, just in case there are any other questions that we can add to this before we make the site walk from the public. Mr. McNeil.
Good evening, John McNeil, 8 Sebit Street. I do have a couple of, well, actually, my other concern with the well is when they're going to be tapping it, what is the likelihood that is going to churn up sediment that is going to impact the wells in the neighborhood adjacent to it? I believe my well is only 30 feet deep. If, if they got to keep drilling deeper and deeper to get into the aquifer sufficiently, I'm just worried about them churning up sediment. And then I'm going to have to hire a well contractor to do a flush and flush out everything in my house, dumping it down into my septic tank, going into my leaching field, you know, impacting that. So that's a concern I would like to please have addressed. And I also have a concern about the grading that they're going to be doing. My house is directly across the street from this. They're going to be having to do even, I do appreciate them putting the tree lines and, you know, being a lot more concise than the plans than in the last meeting. But they're still going to have to do quite a bit of work. I am worried that the grading process is going to basically cause vibrations that could potentially impact the structural integrity of my home. It's a 1925-built concrete block foundation. You know, I'm worried about foundation settling issues, you know? All the walls are horsehair plaster, not easy to work on, if any of you are familiar with that. So it's one of those things like, you know, if this special permit does get approved, like, I'm thinking, should I get my water tested right before we break ground, they break ground, so that I have some type of evidence of the conditions before? And then if I run into anything afterwards, and then, you know, take photos of every single wall in my house and submit it to my homeowner's insurance in case there are any potential damages. Obviously, this is all conjecture, but they are concerns of mine.
And that's exactly why I take into consideration what you have to say. Because we have an engineer that has to assure us that this is not a detriment to the town as well as you. And that's why this is a good time to get this out, so that we can hear it. So I would imagine, before we go ahead and make any, any decision, we have to hear from our town's engineer regarding these issues.
That's, that's good to know. And also, you know, about the septics, this is, let's call it an assumption, but I still need to put my hand up about it if they are going to be renting these places out. And if the tenants, either through ignorance or carelessness, do not put stuff into the sewer that should not be there. I can see the tree lines, I just would like to know, like, what is the game plan? If and when the leaching fields need to be redone? Are they going to have to do additional tree clearing to get the equipment in? You know, the excavators to do any sort of remediation work on the leaching field? Because I'm assuming they'd be putting the septic in before they started building the actual structures.
We'll be going out to do a site walk, and when we do the site walk, we'll be taking that into consideration and as well as the systems that are going in. Again, that will go to the engineer to take a look at for you. And I think the other thing I wanted to say to you is the Board of Health will probably, this is a special permit, so we'll probably, will be allowed to condition things such as working with the Board of Health to see to it that that's regulated, probably because it's rental. It may be something that the Board of Health regulates more frequently. But again, that will be for us to work with them on to find out, you know, as far as that system is, as far as the leaching system is.
Okay.
The septic system is concerned. So my goal is to try to work with both parties to get everybody's concerns in, along with the professionalism of my, my board and our town's engineer.
Okay, very good to know, thank you. And I think that was it? Sorry, I lost my train of thought for a quick second. I mean, I mean also, and just, they're anticipating four cars, you know, the traffic issue. I mean, just anecdotally, I was in a fender bender yesterday at Tremont Street and Wareham Street. And the police officer who was taking our statements was, when she saw my address, was like, oh, how is the traffic on your road? Have people still speeding? And I kind of laughed and said, it's the same as it's always been, you know? So I don't, even adding another building, I think, is going to contribute dangerously and negatively to the traffic situation. I mean, the police officer even asked if she could sit in my driveway to try and catch speeders because it's a really hard road to patrol itself. So that's all my concerns for now, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for bringing those concerns forward. Please. If you could state your name, sir?
Yes, Bruce Benson, 9 Sebit Street. Sorry to take so long. I try to not beat the issues that we've been talking about too hard, but I really got to get back to these trees and the land clearing and all this business. Last time, it was stated they were going to clear 15 feet around the homes for safety. I agree with Mr. Diaz, the trees are very big there. The majority of those trees throughout that lot are over 100 feet high and consequently, easily over 15 inches diameter. And I think no matter how many trees you clear on that lot, unless you clear all of them, you can't ensure safety to your home, because it's not possible with that reasoning. I just think that's a real issue for me. Also, talking about.
So if I could ask you, that's an issue for you in the fact that you think a tree is going to fall on your house? Or are you concerned about a tree falling on their dwelling?
No, I, that's not an issue for my home. What I do think is, and I agree with Mr. Diaz, when you open up a swath in there, you're going to weaken all the other trees and you're going to have additional damage from those existing trees. Those trees have a status right now as a unit, where they stand collectively. And they're doing pretty well. But those trees are consistently typical throughout that lot, big trees. Not that many maples and other stuff on, on that lot. Now the driveway's bigger, more clearing. I, I'm interested to see what they're going to clear. They're talking about clearing near the sidelines. They can plant all the new trees they want. I will never see them in my lifetime. I will never get any benefit out of them. Yet I am looking for the future, and that's why I'm here tonight, is to talk about the future and decades. I also agree that these duplexes, I just think they're a terrible idea. You're putting twice the, twice the strain on the, the resources, water, sewage effluent, et cetera. Also, I would have liked to address the actual basic construction issues that are going to take place on that site. That's a narrow street, not two lanes wide. We get a lot of traffic, most of it is non-residents, cars and commercial trucks, loaded trucks, too. How are you going to manage the vehicles on the side of that road? You're going to park them on the side? You're going to depress the edge of that road? You're going to make a ditch? You're going to knock the tower off the side of that road? That road is already crowned, it's got a crack down the middle. I don't want that road repaired. I don't want it to turn into more of a drag strip than it is. I like it the way it is. I think it's going to be very hard to manage the volume of heavy equipment that it's going to take to improve that lot. And I know that firsthand because I'm well-versed in construction. And secondly, I know this is not your purview because it's a point of view, but these duplexes are a terrible idea. No pride of ownership by an owner, no owner occupied, steady potential stream of tranchets coming to our neighborhood who have no ties to the neighborhood or know the neighbors. And they can change. And also, these people can make all the promises you want. Suppose they sell the place in five years, what happens then? Are there deed restrictions on these things? Where does your purview go in the future? You know, your concern's here. So that's my concern with that lot. And that lot stands right next to my property, I butt that right there on Number 9. You can easily view those sidelines right there. I have a plan at the, at the Registry of Deeds. There's a chain link fence, it's approximately two feet on my side of my thing going all the way down. So you can see where that, that line is. I can't read that sideline setback, so they 49, 50, or what's going on with that?
I have the same problem, I believe it's 51.
So, if I may, so where the cursor's at right now, on the right side of the property?
It's 51, because I apologize, because the other plan said 49.3 and 49.6. So somehow they squeezed some footage on this lot, I don't know how. Maybe they changed the size of the buildings, that's the only option. You did, good. Hey, not the personal guys, I've been in the construction business, I know this process, I've had a lot of stuff doing this. I do have issues with the other lots, I won't speak to them at all now. And I don't want to take up your time because it's getting.
No, I appreciate it, I wanted anything new that you could bring forward that we didn't have last week.
I appreciate that well business. I believe you have to have a deep well to be compliant with the Board of Health. I don't think shallow wells are any longer driven in.
And I believe the Board of Health will be the one to explain to them what they have to do with that.
But I think that'll need some inspection, too.
Myself, I'd prefer to see an artesian that way there, I don't have to worry about it.
I believe that's what you need.
But again, I don't have jurisdiction on how they drive a well.
The business of the granite. I've dug wells around this town. There was a big plume of glacial till up around Meadow Street, like that area. You get down that neck of the woods, you might hit an erratic boulder, but you're not going to hit that pink granite like you do in other parts of this town.
Well, Ms. Bott, I believe they can't build the house anyways if they can't drive a well to get water, true.
And the Board of Health will absolutely not let you build a house without water or occupy a house without water or a septic system. That meets the regulations. Nor will the fire department allow you to move into a house that doesn't have proper fire management. Nor will the building commissioner issue a building permit with things built out of coke.
Well, it's a process. And it has to go through.
Correct.
Before you get to see, you're the first step. You know, the other question I got, I think people might really want to know, what is, I tried to research this online, I couldn't get anything. What is Section 5300? Why is this a special permit? And why is this thing non-conforming?
5300 is the section of the zoning bylaw that deals with special permits. And that's what we're doing tonight.
And what's non-conforming about this?
There's nothing non-conforming about it.
Why are we here?
The zoning bylaw requires a special permit to build a duplex.
The duplexes are the reason we're here.
5300.
That's the answer I was looking for.
There you go.
It, it's listed in the use chart, Section 2300, it's one of the first.
I would try to research it, I don't mean to bother you guys.
No, no, it's okay. On the left side, it'll say residential and it'll list duplex, and then it'll say special permit through the plan.
Well, and I got to state in the duplex, I just think it's a horrible response to our neighborhood. I'd like your board to protect our property value, the neighbors and the neighborhood. That's what I ask of you, thank you.
Ms. McNeil.
I'm Emily McNeil at 8 Sebit Street. I'm going to be living, I live directly across from the driveway to the proposed plans. I see that you've tilted, I understand that you've tilted the property a little bit and that it is being set back 73 feet, which is a little bit more than it was before. So it's not as much of an impact in, you know, staring directly into our living room window. But I do look out my living room window and I see that lot every single day. And if you think that you are going to be able to keep this much vegetation around and take those trees out of that size, that it's not going to happen. Those trees are completely throughout, so.
If I could, you're exactly directly across the street?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So that's the one with, with the trees. You know, there's a significant number of them that are going to be larger than 15 inches in diameter, a lot. And as I said, that is completely throughout that lot. And then the other thing that I was kind of confused about a little bit is in the notes I wrote from the last meeting, I thought that it said that the driveway needed to be 20-foot wide, and you've changed it to 22-foot wide, so I don't know if that was a mistake.
That's based on the fire department?
Okay.
They're looking, the proposed site design does not meet the requirements of the copper fire department. Driveways serving two dwellings shall be 22 feet wide.
Perfect, there we go, that's that. And then I know that it sounds like not an awful lot of added cars. And then I know that it sounds like not an awful lot of added cars, four cars to this street, but this street only has a few houses on it. It's not a big street and four extra cars is another, what, twenty-five percent of just the people who are residents on that street, let alone the usage of the public as a cut through. And not to, you know, delve into the other lots, but there is also going to be vehicles from those other lots who are going to be using this street as a cut through. That is what everybody does here. That is the road that people use to cut through. So those vehicles need to be taken into consideration for lot one as well.
Excuse me, which vehicles?
Vehicles from the other three lots that are proposed. They will affect Seapet Street.
They will? If you could explain?
So, Seapet Street is often used as a cut through from Tremont Street then to Wareham Road.
Okay.
Or right across from fifty-three, then people will go right across through Seapet Street onto Wareham Road.
Okay, so you're concerned about lot four, lot three and lot two using Seapet Street to go to Wareham?
Yep.
Correct.
Yep. Or to go wherever because, yeah, that is just what that road is used for so often. And we, you know, Mr. Benson mentioned in the last meeting that it's about two hundred vehicles a day that are going down that street and I believe it. And as he mentioned just now, you know, that includes everything, emergency services, trucks, school buses, everything's going down that street. There's no discrimination. While I'm talking about emergency services, again, this is such a small community area and even out onto, you know, the other roads surrounding, all the houses are kind of, you know, set apart a little bit and adding any more strain onto emergency services in this area doesn't seem like something that I would be looking forward to. Something that I think should be considered is, my husband and I are probably one of the newer homeowners on this street, but so many other people on this street have been here for their entire lives. It is their home, it is our home. We have no intention of going anywhere else. And there is a sense of pride, there is a sense of community. And even people who aren't here today that live on our street, walking up and down the street, walking their dogs, whatever road is, there is a sense of community here and I do think that this will have an impact on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi. Karen Lapham, Main Street Carver here. I'm a renter in town and I listened to a meeting last week and my couple of questions were, I think that they said that, no, it's not gonna be part of the forty-D project. Right? No?
No, these are duplexes.
Right. So, I believe they talked about a forty-R project, which I think is part of the MBTA program, right? Something like that? Are these gonna apartments, duplexes of apartment, are they gonna be considered any of the programming that the state is looking for to be mandated?
No.
So they're just totally separately individual?
Just a guy building a duplex.
Okay.
Opposed to a house. Guy building a duplex opposed to a house.
Okay.
A single family dwelling.
He's just building one?
No.
No, one set of them.
There's gonna be four.
All right.
We are addressing lot one of four.
So I just, I know I came in late, I'll watch the rest of it later, but I just, those were my questions because I went to a meeting last week about the next coming project. So I just wanted to be clear about those aren't part of that. And again, somebody else asked, are these privately owned? Are they eventually gonna be sold off? You know, is there gonna be any way that, you know, that rent is affordable for people? I'm not even sure what the square footage of these places is, but I'm gonna tell you, I moved from a eighteen-hundred square foot house to downsize and what I moved into is a nineteen-hundred square foot because that just makes no sense that that's how big we make stuff. And a fifty-five and older I was supposed to move to is a nineteen-hundred square feet and people don't need that much space if you, especially if you're gonna put older people in there, which I don't think that's what you folks are at at this point. But I just don't believe that your bigger is always better because it's not. Because your bigger takes away from the ground, the parking lot, the trees, the all of the above that we've talked about. You might not care, but I do because I pick up trash in this town, so I do care. And I think that the other, all these new people that are gonna come to town are not gonna care and respect about these people's nice little neighborhood that they do live in, that it's scary enough.
Could you refer to me, please?
I apologize. I do apologize.
That's okay.
So anyways, that's it.
I wanted to give you an opportunity to come forward if you had something new to say about lot one.
And then I just was curious, is there anything about the fire hydrants or are they gonna have a pressure system in or am I just far advanced in my thought?
Well, they're going, the dwellings are gonna have to require sprinkler systems. I don't know as far as the hydrants are concerned. They're putting one building, they'll be putting one duplex on Seapet Street and we're discussing the one building that's going to be put on Seapet Street at this moment.
We all know water's an issue in this town, so I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thank you. I'm gonna think my water's blocked from my house.
Do I have anybody else that would like to come forward and have an additional concern for the concerns that we already have before us on this lot one? All right, then. I'm still open for us.
Okay.
Please, Mr. Gaskin.
The, with regards to, with regards to the traffic, being that these are rentals, is in all likelihood that you're gonna end up with three, four, maybe even five or six adults living in these houses, living in one or both of these houses. And the possibility that every one of them has a car. And to say that it's a three-bedroom home and it's only gonna be a family of four that moves in there, I think is a little bit short-sighted. And to think that it's only gonna be four cars because you have, you're thinking that it's only a family of four that has underage children that's gonna be living here at that time is also short-sighted. So with regards to the traffic and the parking, where people are gonna be putting cars, I think it's gonna be, I think it could end up being a disaster having that many people into one house, bringing all their cars. And really, really causing a lot of problems on this road with traffic. Not just putting in four cars, but putting in six, eight adults, all with their vehicles, parking out on the street, parking across the street, parking down the street, leaving their cars on Tremont, walking up Wareham, wherever they can park. I've seen it in other neighborhoods. It's a big potential problem.
Who's to say there's just two cars per unit? You know, you have company over or whatever. Where are they packing them?
Exactly.
Mr. Bott, I have a favor to ask of you. Maybe you could explain to us what, as the planning board, our jurisdiction has to speak of these things as far as traffic flow and whether or not it could be a single dwelling or a duplex dwelling? Maybe you might have some insight for us or some, an explanation to that?
Well, zoning is based upon the number of units. So we've got two units here, so the minimum zoning requirement is four parking spaces. In this case, there's actually two garages. Sometimes people put cars in their garage. My wife has complained to me, you could put a car in the garage if I got all my crap out of it. But you essentially got, showing six parking spaces on the site. You know, our requirements are making sure it complies with zoning. There's no zoning requirement that has a maximum number of vehicles on a site. There's no zoning that pertains to homeownership versus rental. We zone for the units that are being on there, single-family duplexes, multifamily if that was the case, and those requirements based on that. So, there's no jurisdiction that says, nor, the act of factors been a numbers, court cases about the size of a family and how many people are in a unit and what constitutes a family. So, you cannot, to the best of my knowledge, regulate, this is the maximum number of people who can live in this space. This is the maximum of cars you can put on the site.
Exactly.
That's an enforcement issue where if there's cars all over the place, you call the cops. But I don't believe we have any parameters for saying, these have to be homeowners versus rental, and there's no parameters for saying, this is the maximum number of vehicles you could put on the site.
Thank you. I needed, I needed for us to hear that and for the public to hear that as well. All right then. We, so, board, we're probably gonna wanna do our site walk on all four or are we gonna break them all up? Or should we just make an appointment to meet and do one site walk per lot? I think we should probably treat them as individuals, but I'd like to get any feedback of what you guys think.
I could do all four at once. We're there and if we can all get together for an hour.
You think fifteen minutes is a fair amount of time to, we've got a lot to, got a lot to take into consideration to look at in that time.
We can split it into two if you, if you'd prefer.
Well, that's why I wanna get everybody's feedback, how everybody feels about that. And Bill is part of this, so.
I can, I could do any way you like, but I could certainly allocate a couple of hours to go out there and do it all at once. So that we're not holding anybody up.
I'd like to think at least twenty minutes per site is gonna be what we really need, so. Be nice to squeeze it into fifteen minutes per lot, but I think in order to do it right, we should probably give ourselves a little more time. So, my thought is, we agree to, whether we do one or all four at a time or split them in half.
Can we see how it goes?
Well, we have to, they probably have to pay their engineer in order to come out and stake it that way. And I think it's good for us to have their engineer there to meet with, meet with us for us to have any questions that are gonna come up because we have the public's concerns to, you know, to discuss with them at the time. So, if I could call you forward and ask you, if we were to set this up in two times, is that a difficult thing for you or should we try to fit it all into one? Because what I'm saying is we're either gonna probably spend a close, close to an hour and a half to hour forty-five minutes to take a look at all four of them.
Sure. Again, my name's Steve Kowalski, Webby Engineering. It really makes more sense for us to stake everything out in one, one time. You know, scheduling for us, the hardest thing is to just kinda get the guys on site. Once they're there, that was kinda why I was offering to, you know, stake some of the house corners, building corners to make it a little easier for you to kinda visualize where those were gonna be. So, I just kinda have to have an idea how long it's, you know, when you're planning on scheduling the site visit, do you have any idea when it might be and when this, because I know, you know, this week's tough, the guys haven't really been able to do much work because of the heat. I think next week's looking better, so we could probably get them out there next week to stake everything out. And I don't know if that gives you enough time. I don't know if we're thinking continue for two weeks or?
All right. Well, why don't I, why don't I discuss with my board?
Okay.
Knowing that you're fine with staking all four properties out and if we can possibly make the time to do it in one?
Yeah, that would make the most sense for us, sure.
So, if I may, the board's next scheduled meeting is August thirteenth.
Okay.
So, members, I'm gonna ask that we can come up with one or two days that all four of us, all five of us, now that we have Bill? Six? Six? Excellent.
My schedule's pretty open. I'd prefer not the weekend, so.
Okay.
Either midnights or weekdays.
I am committed from eleven-thirty to five o'clock every day, so I'm just putting it out there that I would have to give myself roughly two hours before the beginning and ending of my shift. So, if I had to go out there by myself, that would be one thing, but I'm just letting you know that I would probably have to meet either at nine in the morning, nine-thirty, yeah, or after five. So, I'm letting you guys know what I can do, so you guys can work around that, all six of us. It's kinda hard to get six people on board at the same time.
As long as it's not Thursday, you can do whatever you need.
All right. John, how is your schedule?
My schedule is chock full with work and everything else going on, so.
Maybe you and I could possibly meet at another time?
Whatever you guys can come up with, I will endeavor to join in. My, my schedule right now is so dynamic, it's not, I can't even make ones.
All right, so Thursday's off for Mr. Cullum.
Try five-thirty on a Wednesday night, five-thirty next Tuesday, Wednesday.
Five-thirty next Tuesday or Wednesday, which one?
So, question for Steve. What, when, how long does it take for your survey crew to get out there and stake?
I would say we're gonna need at least next week to be able to get them staked out.
Two weeks out.
Yeah, exactly.
I would say two weeks.
Next week, I think would be impossible for us to, so you would have enough time to look at everything. I'm figuring by the end of, you know, this next week, the week after this one, that we could probably have everything staked out.
So our next meeting is, we don't have another meeting in July, is that true?
There's not one currently scheduled, correct.
There is not?
There is not.
All right, so, two weeks out, possibly Tuesday, Wednesday night. What?
Tuesday night?
What works for you? Tuesday works for you? Does Tuesday work for you?
Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday, five o'clock?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty?
That, that's fine?
I wanna make, I wanna make this work for everybody. Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty. Ellen, five-thirty. Bill, that works because it's not a Thursday?
July thirtieth, he's talking about?
I think we're talking about July thirtieth.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
And I think we can all agree that five-thirty, July thirtieth, I believe that's...
There's a question for you. Where do we park?
We're gonna park on Seapet Street.
Seapet Street.
It'll be slow traffic that day. I would venture to say likely on Tremont and walk around.
That's probably not advisable.
No, we-
That stretch on Tremont is pretty dangerous.
All right, so, we're agreeing to five-thirty, the thirtieth? And that does give you enough time, Steve, to?
Yeah, we should be able to get everything staked out by the end of next week.
All right.
You'll let me know.
All right. So forgive me, at this point, am I asking for a motion to accept that we're gonna take a site walk so that we can move to the next one?
No, I think we just, I think we've moved that, but we need to, if we're gonna, done with lot one, we need to move to continue it till the thirteenth.
All right. So, I'm looking for a motion to move this to the thirteenth of August?
To continue the hearing till the thirteenth of August, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Derek Barley requesting a special permit located at two-seventy-eight Tremont Street until August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, seven P.M. Carver Town Hall, room one.
Second.
Attaboy, Bill. Way to jump in. Proud of you. All right. Next, on the application, oh, sorry, sorry. Mr. Gaskin?
I think it's me.
Oh, it's you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right?
Please. Bill Cullum, right? Alphabetical order.
Bill Cullum, I.
Alan, aye.
Abstain?
Aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. All right. Moving on to the application of Derek Barley requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 278 Tremont Street in Carver Mass, assessors map 126-25-0-R, Lot 2 revised, in the residential agricultural zoning district to construct a duplex.
Okay. Again, my name is Steve Katuski from Webby Engineering. I'll just kinda go over what the changes are on this plan from the last time. I guess the most significant change that we did was we relocated the proposed dwelling, so it's now entirely outside of any wetlands resource buffer, buffer zone or resource areas. So we had a portion at one point that was in the outer repairian zone from Crane Brook, and we slid the proposed duplex to just off of the... Fifty-two feet off of the Westerly property line. We did pivot it a little bit also to kinda meet that setback. The... I just wanted to note also that we included within the label for the lot area, the limit of work area is twenty-eight thousand square feet for this particular site. That, again, keeps us under the threshold of your forty thousand square foot requirement for stormwater. And as was with the last application, we've highlighted a few additional things like the tree lines that are gonna be expected to stay along the property lines to the north and to the west. You can see the existing tree lines kind of lighter. It kinda goes through the middle of the duplex. So we're pushing that back a little bit again. That was to try to keep everything further away from Crane Brook. We had to slide it in that direction, so we also had to extend the limit of the clearing. Before, we were trying to stay within the area that was already open and void of any significant vegetation. On this site also, we've eliminated two wells, and we're down to one well. Same situation sharing with the both units. We changed the configuration again of the units. We did shrink that. I forgot to note that in the last application, we shrank the units down. That's why we've got a little bit better setback on those sites. It's one of the abudders it indicated. So this one also, same thing. We reduced the size, the width of the proposed units, and we stacked them a little bit so that instead of having a straight line across the back of the proposed duplexes, it jogs back four feet. It kinda looks like there's a line that goes across, but that's actually the proposed contour line. These sites, because of the grading and everything and the way that the elevations are already run, our initial proposal, we had grading going around the back of the building, and we thought that might be a concern for some of the abudders. So we were able to minimize that by proposing walkout basements to the rear of the proposed duplex units. Also, we're designating the width. We're a little bit larger than the twenty-two feet. We're at twenty-four feet for the width of the driveway. The only reason we increased that just slightly, a little bit more than the twenty-two, was to sort of center within the access portion of the lot, and also because it is a little bit longer. Give people a little bit more room if they're coming up and down there to be able to avoid any issues. And the septic system issue is still the same. There are individual septic tanks for each one of these units, individual leaching fields based on the size. These ones are gonna be the two bedrooms? Okay, so each one of these units are gonna be two bedrooms. We still have to meet the ton of cover minimum size square footage for these, so they'll be oversized for the intended two bedrooms. But again, we have to meet all of the Board of Health requirements, so the leaching fields, if that's a concern for some of the abudders, as was mentioned in the last one, will be four times larger than a conventional system based on what we're required to. So if there are concerns that the potential tenants would abuse these systems or not take care of them, that may be sort of mitigated because of the size of them. Again, they'll be four times larger than what they're really required to be. So that, again, will hopefully make... So the existing garage will remain. That was on the original plan. I think that's it on what the changes were. Again, we're fifty-two feet to the closest abutting lot line, seventy-seven feet away from the northerly lot line, and the easterly lot line is the river, so we're quite a ways away from that. And from the southerly lot line, which is our adjacent lot, that will be probably the next proposal we're gonna be presenting, we're a hundred and twelve feet, more or less, from that lot line. So it does appear to fit a little bit better on the site than where we originally had it. And I think that's it for any of the proposed changes. Same concerns that were brought up as far as the sprinkling will be addressed by the applicant. Again, consistent with the last application that we were just talking about, they'll meet all the same concerns that the fire department will have. So if that's kinda for me, I can turn it over to Alan. Alan, do you have anything else to add?
Alan Diaz Halifax. No, Steve, I think covered most of the items that I had, so we defer to the Board if they get any other questions or concerns. I do wanna point out one thing, though. The setback on this one, this house is gonna be two-hundred-and-nine feet from Tremont Street.
Right, because we have that forty-foot entrance off of Tremont, correct? That you're gonna use to bring the driveway in?
Exactly. And it's... So the depth of the lot in front of us is a hundred-and-fifty-seven feet, and then you add in the fifty-two feet, more or less, from coming in off of Tremont, gets you that two-hundred-and-nine, two-hundred-and-ten feet, more or less, to where the proposed house is gonna be located on this one. So again, a lot more privacy in this one. Doesn't appear... The front of the house is gonna impact any abutting properties. You're gonna come up and make a ninety-degree left turn to get into the proposed duplexes. Same kinda layout as far as the last ones was brought up before. We've got two parking spaces to address the parking requirements, but each one of these also has a garage, and hopefully if they use those garages, that gives them an additional parking space within the garage. So three parking spaces, but only two bedrooms for each one of these units.
Did you say two?
Yeah, each one will be two. So in effect, you're looking at almost the same density as a typical single-family home of four bedrooms. You just have, you know, the two separate buildings, more or less. Not attached to one another.
All right, I'm gonna open this up to the Board. Are there any additional concerns since our last meeting? Mr. Shea, do you want me... You comfortable, or you want me to come back to you?
I don't have any questions or concerns. I expect when we do our site walk, we'll do the center of the driveway, the buildings, and a little clearing work.
And of course, this will have to... We'll have to hear back from Conservation as far as where they stand on this. Correct?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I think that the process is gonna be ultimately, if they get to file for a building permit on this, the Conservation Commission will review it, but I don't anticipate that they're gonna be required to file a formal application with them because we are outside of any of the actual jurisdiction for the commission on this one. And that was one of the things that I think is a major point to make, is that we did that deliberately to give some protection from, you know, the resource areas that the Conservation Commission would prefer that, I would think, over trying to keep the house... Our initial thoughts were to keep it sort of within the area that's already disturbed and been developed, but having second thoughts on that, we felt it was better to push it outside of that jurisdiction, and then hopefully the commission will, you know, review the site plan when the building permit is applied for, and they will, you know, agree that there's no need to file an application with the Concom on this particular site.
Ms. Sedillo?
I'm perfectly happy with the way it ends up.
I'll just go down the line. Ms. Williams?
No questions.
No questions at this time. Mr. Gasky?
But the only thing that I see really right now is the location of the proposed well. You've got it a good distance away from the structure, but it's... You're getting... You're putting it up really close to the other property lines. Just seems that you got this wide open space closer over to Crane Brook. I'm just wondering, you know, given the considerations, the concerns of people's wells and stuff like that, that that might not be the best place?
Yeah, we could slide that a little bit further south. And we do have the... We're required to be a hundred-and-fifty feet away from the... So I'm just kinda looking if you were to swing an arc from the closest leaching field, we could swing that well closer to the outer repairian zone line, still be outside of the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, and still meet the Board of Health requirement. If that's a good... This is a little corner of the existing tree line in there that we could probably move that well down to. And then that should alleviate any concerns with... I know we were more or less looking at setbacks from typical Board of Health setbacks from the leaching fields, which we know on this particular site are in the front, and their well's kinda towards the side on their driveway. This one on the corner, Tremont's down closer towards the road. But we were kinda thinking that. But now I think as the Board is showing concerns that the placement of wells in conjunction with other wells is an important concern, I think that we relocate that, slide at least fifty feet further back, that'll hopefully, you know, it's reasonable.
Thank you.
Bill?
Are there also white pines on this lot that you're gonna wanna be taken down?
No. Very minimal amount of vegetation to be removed.
Can I ask a question? Who's responsible for taking care of the lot on the outside? I mean, I know, you know, the son is moving in. Will you be... Will he be responsible for taking care of the outside of this?
He'll be responsible, just like any homeowner, of maintaining his property. So, you know, it's his responsibility. He's gonna accept all the ups and downs that go from being a landlord, so...
Thank you.
The existing garage, it's remaining.
Yeah.
I suppose I would like to ask the owner what their intentions are for that, if they could... Mr. Barley? You probably answered me two weeks ago, but I just wanna make sure that I understand exactly what you wanna do with the garage.
Yes. I'm just gonna probably use it for storage. I have a motorhome. I don't know, just whatever, nothing crazy. I'm not gonna run a business out of there, nothing like that. Just, you know, I don't know. I have a motorhome. My son has a trailer, camper trailer, whatever. Probably keep it there in the winter to keep it out of the weather. I'm guessing that's pretty much it.
All right. And did the fire department take a look at that to see if it was dilapidated or is it in a sound structure?
They did. No one's taken a look at it. It was currently... Electricity's on. Someone was currently using it, I guess, before we bought it. It looks like it's in pretty good shape. Yeah, there's probably some stuff. Maybe we might have to do some repairs to the outside, but structurally, it's got a foundation. I don't know when it was built, but it seemed fine to me.
Right, that was my question.
Along that line, if I may, Mr. Shea?
Please.
So in the memorandum I put together for the Board, I suggested a condition for that, that the existing barn shall not be used for commercial purposes. Equipment stored on-site should be limited to personal vehicles and equipment for maintaining the property, such as mowers or snow blowers. Just as a potential condition.
I think that's fantastic. That's the whole reason why this is a special permit, so that we can condition concerns. Have I asked you?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've all been through this. I will ask if there's anybody that has anything new to add. New to add?
I'd like to address some of the things you said.
I think we really have to have a site walk in order to be able to, you know, answer you...
Could I address this barn?
Go ahead.
Hi, Bruce Benson. Am I to understand that there are restrictions on the bylaws as on RA law used for business? Is that correct?
Mr. Barley? Ms. Barley just explained.
Yeah, you can't... It's a residential agricultural lot. It's not a business lot.
Well, I have a situation in my backyard where that's not the case. Why hasn't that been enforced? Nothing to do here.
So let's focus on lot two.
I am, but I... So you reassure me there is a mechanism in town to ensure that that will never be used for business because the RA law restricts that, is that correct?
Correct.
Great.
We will have to make that a condition on this special permit.
I'll follow that up on my own. I have another issue. I'd like to talk about the wells. You know, it's nice you put in one well. You're still drawing the same amount of water. You're still putting out the same amount of effluent. Those septic tanks, you got eight instead of four. All you need is a plug filter on the sanitary T, and you're gonna have a mess.
But I believe that's a Board of Health concern.
I'm tired of them, guys. I apologize.
Oh, no, no.
No, no, no.
Right, I mean, this is the place to ask the questions.
Thank you very much.
Yep?
I have just one very quick, short question.
I believe... Well, I do think Tracy had her hand up.
Oh, sorry. You go ahead.
All right?
My turn. Sorry.
Thank you. John McNeil, 8 Seapit Street. Just the traffic issue, can I assume that's gonna be assessed on the site walk before I go any farther with the questioning of it, or...
I think it's difficult for us as a Board to ask that they do a traffic review on something like this because unfortunately, we're looking at... These could have been single dwellings. And we can't really ask somebody who's gonna buy a house and make it a single dwelling to do a traffic review. Basically, what's happening is this is gonna be doubled as far as traffic is concerned, but it's still the same idea where it's a duplex.
On paper, it...
Yeah, it's gonna be... So the difficult thing that we have is we don't have the jurisdiction to tell them what they can build, where they can build it, and the impact that it has to the traffic. So that's where, you know, when we do our site walk, we're gonna be looking for, you know, issues that we can address and that we can use the special permit to make conditions on.
Okay.
So Mr. Gasky brought up a good point about the traffic and about the extra vehicles that could be parked on the road. And then I took the opportunity to have Mr. Barley explain that. Really wasn't anything we can do about that, with the exception of, you know, hopefully, out of respect by the builder and the owner, that they will see to it that the requirement of having two vehicles is gonna have to be something that, you know, we have to ask them for their respect. You know, we can't enforce it.
Yeah, you're not telling me how many, like, my parking situation. I totally understand that, yeah.
I believe the Board is with me on the fact that we want to invite families. This is eight new places for somebody to live here. I have four adult children. I want them to live in this town, and I can't get them to live in this town because it costs so much. So the idea that somebody is gonna put in an opportunity for eight more families to come in here, to me, that's a good thing.
Right, yeah.
A positive thing. But also, as a Board, we have the responsibility to make sure that all your concerns are met. And it's hard for us to go any further on traffic, traffic studies, where it's, you know, a single dwelling that's going to be a duplex. I wish we could do something about it. I know how bad that road is.
Yeah, we all do.
I raised my family here for the last thirty-five years. And there have been more accidents there than there have been on Route 44.
I know, yeah.
The last mile.
This was me yesterday. So I guess one thing I would just politely request to take into consideration when you do the site walk is to keep in mind that the main artery, 495, is gonna be a left-hand turn out of these three lots, really. Making a left-hand turn on a Tremont Street during rush hour is basically impossible. So most likely, to me, I think people would make a right-hand turn, then bang a right down Seapit Street to loop around to Wareham Street to get around to 495.
Don't give them that idea.
Oh, no, yeah, exactly. I'm just asking, you know, I'm thinking...
This is a public meeting. This is a public meeting.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, steps ahead, you know, because, so, for my own personal property and safety, that is a concern that I have thought of.
Yeah, I've used that road to go to church.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
But I do, I go the speed limit because I recognize it.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, that, that's really it. Oh, and also, I did forget to mention, when you do that site walk, bring your tech new because there is quite a bit of poison ivy. I'm sure you know that, but I just don't want anybody.
Thank you. I won't be going there in shorts.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to let Tracy go.
Since these plans are in this.
Mr. Benson, please, I, let's give Tracy, Tracy had her hand up.
I just want to know when these, these new.
Mr. Benson, please.
Hi, Tracy Ilberdi, 286 Tremont Street. I just have a question about frontage and what the bylaw is about frontage.
Mr. Vought?
Yes, the frontage required is a minimum of 150 feet.
Unless it's a rear lot, then it's 40.
Yeah, so in this case, this was, and thank you for pointing that, this is one of the rear lots that was created under the A and R back in April. So, the, the lots that were created January of 2024 include Lot Two, which is the rear lot. It has three times the acreage and it has a requirement for 40-foot of rideaway. So, that complies with the zone.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Benson.
Hi, Bruce Benson. Since these plans are in a state of flux, when would they be available for the public to review? It seems like things are changing and.
I believe they're on the website.
They're in the planning office. They're on our website.
These are on your website?
Correct.
Okay, great. Because I have to say.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Karen Lafferty, Main Street, Carver. I might even be at the wrong spot to ask this question, but I just wanted people to take into account that if we go forward and we give them their permit and say, yeah, go ahead, and they decide to come forward, I don't know what their regular business hours are, but if, if somebody comes forward looking to extend their business hours till like 8:00 PM at night, that we have to let our butters know. It would just be nice if these things happened in the town. And I might be at the wrong meeting, but I'm going to say it at the next meetings that I go to too, because I think it's important.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm not following you. Business hours?
So, there's a project, so, so we're building a project here in town, right? And, and the, the company has hours set in place that they want to build. So, they came before a board, I'm not sure which board, and said, can we extend our hours? And the board all said, sure, okay.
Construction.
Construction. Well, when we get to that, we have to do our site walk first.
So, that's what I'm just asking about. I said, is this, well, where it's a special board, I'm, I'm just maybe unclear that it's a special meeting, so I didn't know your concerns come out. I didn't know if it had to be this one. That's why I said I'm just asking out loud.
Okay. No, when, when and if we do go forward, we'll be determining when working hours will be.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I, I believe the construction hours.
It's seven o'clock in the morning, right?
Yeah, are listed, but I, I'm not entirely certain what the hours are.
I think they're 7:5.
Maybe Mr. Vought could.
Oh, that's the Building Commission.
Well, I'm kind of concerned, so I think they're 7:5, but when somebody asks you to extend, I think the butters, the directly butters should notify or ask their opinion of that.
I would expect they would need a variance in order to.
Well, sure, I'm happy to have it. I'm happy to listen to it. I'm married. I, I married him all the time. His father's made.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely take that into consideration when we get to that point. I think the most important thing we have before us now is to have our site walk. So, we've had, everybody's had an opportunity to discuss too. So, I'm going to ask that we could continue this to August 13th. Ask for a motion to continue it to August 13th.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing on the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit located at 278 Tremont Street 2, August 13th, 2024, 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
One second.
We got a motion and a second.
And you got them both? All right. Then I will ask Bill.
I'll call him. I. Mr. Shea says I.
Ellen Sedillo says I.
We're just going to assume you're.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, okay.
Marilla Williams says I.
All right. And Kevin Robinson says I. Mr. Vought, would you be so kind as to read the next one? I.
Certainly.
I, I found it. I found it. Moving on to the application, on the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 278 Tremont Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 126-25-0-R, Lot 3 revised in the residential agricultural zoning district to construct a duplex.
Again, Steve Katuski from Webby Engineering, and I'll go over again what the, the changes are on this version of the plan. I think, again, the most significant thing that had changed was the location of the proposed duplexes. These were a little bit further back on the earlier plans that we had submitted. Now, we've pushed them closer towards the road. The reason for that, again, is, is we want to maintain the most, further setback we can from the resource areas of Crane Brook. In this case here, we should note that this, this, this proposed lot does have some work within the outer riparian zone. All of the work will be outside of the 100-foot buffer zone of the boring vegetated wetlands, but a river has a, an increased setback for their buffer zone out to 200 feet. So, in this case, there's a small portion of the rear of, of one of the duplex units that's within the outer riparian zone. They, there's a little bit of grading that's in there, but it's a lot further, close, it's a lot further away and closer towards the street than it was originally proposed. The other thing we did on this particular site was, again, we staggered the, changed the, the exterior shape of the, of the proposed duplexes. This one is similar to the one that was on Seapet Street. We, we shifted the, the garage, kind of slid it forward a little bit, so that, again, you don't have a solid foundation wall along the back. This one here is not a walkout. We're just essentially keeping the grades almost with, with what's already out there. So, it's basically just, just, just kind of making it from a, a little bit of a slope to the rear to flattening out around the house, which is typically what you want. You want to have a little bit of a flat area around, outside of the house. We do have two separate septic systems, again, similar to the last couple of applications. Individual septic tanks for each one of the units, individual leaching fields. We are showing them in, in the location at the front left-hand corner of the lot, and the well is in the back. And, and again, in this particular site, we're, we're only showing, and we're only proposing one well, again, to try to minimize on the impact to the, to the aquifer. This one here, again, we maintain the 150-foot setback. I don't see any problems with the location between this and the, the other well that we have is probably well over 300 feet away, probably well over 300 feet away from any neighbor's well, and it's going to be probably close to 300 feet away from the well on the next site down south from here. So, I think the placement on the, the well on this site makes the most sense. The leaching field, again, trying to maintain those setbacks. And we did, as I mentioned on, on the earlier plans, we did have some septic perk tests that were done by another engineering firm, and, and they were in this location, and we know that the soils were good. We're probably going to go back and try to reperk that same location, just to confirm when we do our design. As I said in the last, on the last lot, these septic systems are designed to meet the minimum 800 square feet for the town of Carver. These particular duplexes are going to be two bedrooms each, so you've got a total of only four bedrooms, which is, again, mostly, most kind of like a typical of a single-family dwelling. But in this, in, in this case, you're going to end up with two separate septic systems to break that up. And each one of those septic systems will be almost four times as large as a single-family, typical two-bedroom, single-family. So, again, we've got a, an increased size and capacity for those leaching fields, and we're decreasing the density down to just four bedrooms total. I think that kind of does it as far as, we're not really changing much on the tree line over here. As you can see on the plan, there's sort of an empty area in the middle of this location. I should note that there's an existing dwelling. You've probably all seen it. It's, it's right there along the edge of Tremont Street. We're proposing that's going to be raised. We are utilizing the existing curb cut, though, so we're minimizing on the impact up and down Tremont Street. We do have, in this case, we have the, the width of the access for the proposed duplex is 22 feet, which was, again, requested by, and required by the fire department. And we also have for each one of the units the same two exterior parking spaces, and each unit will have its own garage. So, you end up with three potential parking spaces per unit. So, again, we're exceeding the, the two that would be required by, by utilizing the garage. So, I think that's it, other than, just to mention once, I don't think I mentioned it already, is that the disturbance on this area, we've got a smaller area that we're, that we're proposing to impact. This is probably the smallest impact on all of these sites. It's only 17,800 square feet, so less than a half of an acre, well under the 40,000 square foot requirement of your stormwater regulation. So, again, this one a little bit, a little bit more easier to kind of visualize because it's, it's, it's 89 feet from the street and 35 from the side. So, it's, it's somewhat centered under the lot in parallel with the street, as opposed to the other ones that were a little bit, you know, kind of angled a little bit with the lot lines. So, if that's, that's all I have. Alan, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
I just wanted to add that we kind of looked at the adverse impact that these dwellings would have on Tremont Street. And as you know, there's businesses to the north and to the east and to the south. So, we, you know, we're looking at, I think, a minimal amount of impact.
Did I, when we asked for the markers, did we ask for a curb cut on the last one? Because I, I think I'm going to ask that we get a curb, curb cut marker, so we can get an idea where they're going to be coming in off of.
You're referring to all the, all the, all the previous ones? Yes. We noted that, I think, Mr. Shea wanted us to stick the center lines.
Okay, good.
So, we'll, we'll give the center line out at the road, and then the center line kind of dead center in the middle of where the proposal, so you'll have sort of a two-lane, you know, two lines to kind of line up, and that should help you to visualize where, you know, because the, I guess the, the advantage we have is that we don't have any real, other than the retreat lot, any real curves. The, these accesses are coming pretty much perpendicular off of the, off the roads.
I am very concerned, the fact that, I believe the speed limit's 45 miles an hour there, isn't it?
20, 25, 20, 25.
Oh, this is where we're slowing down?
This is.
Yeah, I wonder.
This is directly across from the intersection, not lot, the lot next. This is where South Main Street merges with Tremont Street.
Yeah.
So, here it is on the GIS on the map. So, here's the intersection of Seapet and Tremont.
But we have people that are going to be coming from 45, 50 miles an hour down to 20, and I've rarely seen anybody respect that. That, that is a major concern to me. So, that's why, to me, seeing that center line, so we can, you know, determine how bad it's going to be coming out there. Because as it is, there probably not going to be anywhere for us to park to go out on Tremont Street. I certainly don't want to put my car in there.
You can go, you can pull on to the site.
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's plenty of room to park. You can park in the driveway of the previous lot. There's plenty of room to park.
Plenty of room at, at two?
At this location, yeah. So, here's lot two.
Even at this location, you have a, it's Allen Diaz. You, you know, you've got a structure that's there, so you can park to the north of that in the driveway. There is plenty of room to park.
All right.
And we can mark the lot corners. Now, I don't see a limit of clearing on here.
It's, unfortunately, it, it's shown as the siltation barrier that we, we were proposing, but it's, the label isn't, isn't there on this one. But it is that dark line that you can see that goes sort of in a V shape around the proposed well. But that's our, that's our limit of clearing.
I'd like to see that marked, as well as the outer riparian zone on the site walk. And the corners of the house.
Would, would flagging be appropriate for the riparian zone, just to, we can, we can flag that pretty easily.
Yeah, sure.
And then, you know, just kind of find some trees to hang it on.
Do you have any other concerns, Connie?
Nothing that I didn't raise at last meeting.
All right. Ellen?
Good.
Ms. Williams?
Has it been determined if you need to go in front of the Historic Commission to raise that house?
I believe we do, right?
Yeah, the, the applicants have looked into that. They, they are, they will be required.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Collins?
I'm good. You know, I'm not sure if I mentioned it, but we will be required to go through the Conservation Commission on this particular lot.
And Mr. Gasky?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. And I'm going to put it out there one more time to the public, if there is anybody that has something new to bring forward for a concern. I see a smile. Does that mean you want to come back? Please.
Emily McNeil, 8 Seapet Street. So, it is to do with traffic, once again. But I just wanted to point out one of the major dangers that I see right on this part of the, of Tremont Street is when people are making that left-hand turn to go down 58. A lot of people think it's totally fine to undertake that, and I just worry that people are trying to pull out of those driveways. That's where, you know, a sideswipe or something like that is going to happen. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Vought, I have a question concerning that. Would the builder have to work with the town in order to maybe put some cautionary measures in as far as slowing that 45 down to 20? Because I, I hate to admit this, but I was with a friend the other night that came down that road. He's like, oh, why does it have to be 20 and everything else to come to a halt? So, I think, you know, is it possible for us to talk to the town as far as that's concerned?
Well, the, the speed.
The cost anyways.
Yeah, the, the speed limit is signed, and of course, you know, people decide to do whatever they're going to do with their brake or their accelerator.
Right.
But the typical concerns about safety and, and development on a road are site distance, is there adequate site distance? And is there, is the, what's being proposed going to overwhelm the roadway? I would venture to say on Tremont Street, if you have a numbered highway, then two units, four units, six units, 10 units aren't going to impact the level of service for 58. As long as you've got an adequate site distance to see out, that's typically what we look at as far as those transportation measures. I did reach out to the police chief, because we've had a couple of discussions about that, who emailed me back and said, I am working on getting stats for our record management system to motor vehicle crashes in the area. It is my recollection that we do have a number of accidents. At the intersection from South Main, I'm going to go toggle to my zoning member, we do have some issues with interactions, accidents from the intersection of South Main to Tremont Street. These usually involve inattention from the drivers who stopped at South Main and then proceed without checking to see if the car ahead of them has moved. So, you get to the Y, you look, there's nobody coming. I'm going to go, but the person in front of you hasn't gone. So, the, most of their accidents are somebody getting run into from back because the person behind them didn't wait for the car in front of them to go. But he did say he's going to look into accident, incidents in the area as well.
All right. So, fair to say that we could probably get that by, hopefully by the 13th of August?
I'll ask him again.
All right. Thank you. All right, then. With that last question being asked, I am going to ask that, let me make a motion, ask for a motion to continue this to August 13th.
I will make the motion to continue the application of Derek.
I will make the motion to continue the application of Derek Varley requesting special permit located at 278 Tremont Street to August 13, 2024, 7:00 p.m., Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
Second?
Second.
Go for two.
Uh, Ellen Callum, aye.
Mr. Shea, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye, and John, you're. All right. Moving to the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 278 Tremont Street in Carver, Massachusetts, map 126-25-0-A, Lot 4 revised in the residential agricultural zoning district to construct a duplex.
Again, Steve Katuski, Webby Engineering, and so I'll go over again, the changes to this plan has from the previous original submittal. I guess the most important thing is the location of the proposed duplex. These are actually a lot smaller. They don't have garages. These one, the original location was more centered where you can see the existing driveway was. The reason for that is we were trying to utilize, and we're still trying to utilize the existing curb cut that's out there. There's another curb cut that goes to another dwelling that's on this site, and that's number 278 Tremont Street. That dwelling is also going to be raised, probably, I would say that it has to go before historical for review on that as well. But originally, we were trying to keep the duplex kind of centered within where the access portion was going to be, but we kind of reevaluated the location, thought that we wanted to try to keep as far of a setback away from the resource areas. Again, in this location, similar to the last one, we've got just the outer repairian zone that we're going to impact. So there is a portion, kind of similar to the last one, the back left, I'm sorry, the back rear right corner of the proposed duplex is going to be within the outer repairian zone. So we slid it as far away as we can, meeting all the setbacks from where we're going to need to put the proposed septic systems. Those will be in the left front corner, kind of opposite the ones that are on the previous lots. So again, there were some perk tests that were done along Tremont Street, and we know that the soils are pretty good in this location, so we wanted to keep the system where we know that there's good soils. In this case here, the existing garage will remain. You may have some questions for the applicant on that, but I wanted to point that out. The, this one here, there's not a lot of tree line here that, actually, there's not any real tree cutting that we're proposing. You can see along the, the south of the proposed limit of work, there's the existing tree line that kind of extends over onto the property line and a budding lot, and then to the north of us, there's a little buffer zone there that we were maintaining on the, on the other lot. Those are all going to remain, so we're not expecting any tree cutting in this area. As I said, the proposed duplex is going to be where the existing houses, so it should be pretty easy to visualize where this one's going to be. The curb cut's in the same location, the duplex isn't going to be in the same location. They're actually almost the same size, if you look at kind of where the old house is. These two will be two bedrooms, each one of the units, so you're talking about four bedrooms total. Again, I won't get into the same thing with the septic system, they're four times the size of what would be normally required. And the well is situated 150 feet back. There shouldn't be any impact from this well to any budding. We've got more than 300 feet south from us to the closest to butter. We're well over 300 feet to the north of butter, well over 300 feet away from anything on the other side of the, of the brook, and in the same, I guess, on the other side of Tremont Street. So again, I think the water issue in here sort of, the impact on this lot is a little bit larger because where we're kind of extending out this way for the well, we're at 20,000 square feet of disturbance, but that's kind of a deceptive number because it just kind of illustrates the, designates the limit of work, but that, that area has already been disturbed. There's not really anything that's going to, that's going to change on that as far as the, you know, we're not, we're not cutting any trees down. The vegetation's going to remain the way it is. So we're just sort of delineating that limit of work because on this lot, we are anticipating we're going to have to file with the Conservation Commission, so we'll be filing a notice of intent on this one, and they'll require to know where the limit of work is going to be. So within that envelope, we're at 20,700 square feet. Again, I think that kind of says everything. We've got the 22-foot width on, luckily, the curb cut that's already there is a little bit long, wider than 22 feet, so when you get to the actual throat of the driveway, it's 22. We've got two driveways for each one of the proposed bedrooms and, I mean, each one of the units in there. There's a turnout, more of a place to reverse. I guess you could call it sort of a little bit of extra parking area, although we're not designating it as such. It's just a more of a convenience to be able to back out and then, and then, you know, kind of do your, your L-turn and to get back out on the Tremont Street. So the only other thing we did is we just, for clarification, we wanted to show that there was significant drainage already out on Tremont Street. There's a bunch of series of catch bases, drain manholes that flow south, and there's a culvert at our property line that eventually flows out into Crane Brook. So again, we're not changing anything really on this site either when it comes to grading. Everything is going to be pretty flat. It's, actually is going to be flat from Tremont Street to where the front of the dwelling is going to be. There's a little bit of a slope basically to just kind of flatten out around the building, and then in the rear, it's going to maintain the existing grade. So we're not talking about a lot of changes to the topography on the site. It's pretty much going to stay the way it is. And with that, I'll turn it over to Alan, if Alan has anything else he wants to add.
Yes, Alan Deas, I just wanted to point out that the existing dwelling now is about 1700 square feet, based on the assessors' records. So we're going to be increasing, the duplex will increase it by 700 square feet. There's currently a three-bedroom septic system on there, so we're going to increase from three bedroom to four, so there's not going to be a big impact. We're not 100% sure where the well is, so we're putting a new well in. So I think we've tried to make sure that there is no major impact. It's going in the same, pretty much the same location as existing house, so we're, we think that the impact is very minimal. Thank you.
Of course, when we hear back from the Historical Committee, correct?
Yeah, we have to.
All right, so there's a septic system for a three-bedroom there now, or?
Basically, that's what the assessors, it's currently a three-bedroom house, so it's probably an old existing cesspool.
Right.
So based on the assessors' records, there's a three-bedroom.
Okay. And how far is, how far is the well from the Alberti's well? Over 300 feet, you said?
It's over 300 feet from anything, really, from our lot lines. This is the one that's the furthest south, so from, from here to our, I mean, we're 899 and another 223 just to the lot line, so we're, you know, we're well over 300 feet down, as you go south down Tremont Street.
All right. I'll ask my members if they have any concerns, questions at this time.
Are you going to be able to contain the, all the water on this property, or is it going to be running out to the street? Just looking at the?
It's, nothing's going to change from what's already there. Like I said, the curb cut's going to stay where it is. We're not showing any elevation change, other than if you, you've got an elevation 80.74 out at the front, and then you've got an 80 at the back edge of our pavement. So theoretically, everything kind of slopes from Tremont Street towards the river anyway. We're not changing any of that. All we're doing is just sort of making it flat around the existing house.
And my concerns?
I'm sorry, proposed, proposed.
My concerns are going to be the same that I mentioned last meeting, and the same with Lot 3, is the amount and extent of work that's being done in the protected areas. It's, it's not a small amount. I would like to see the limit of work and the protected area, the riverfront area, marked off, as well as the houses in the center line of the driveway. The corner of the lot will already be marked from the next door lot, and I'm not worried about, because it's very extensive frontage on this, so.
Could I add one comment on that with your concern? What we can provide to the, to the board, which hopefully will maybe make you feel a little bit better, is that part of the requirement that we have when we're working within a riverfront area is they, they require us to take the total riverfront area dating back to 1995. So all of the riverfront area that's this large swath that goes all the way around this site would be included within that area, up to that 200-foot outer repairian zone. And then we're allowed to disturb up to 5,000 square feet or 10% of that riverfront area, whichever is greater. So in this particular case, we would have acres of riverfront area that we would be able to come up with a number. And then the minimum amount that we're actually showing within that outer repairian, if we're at 20,000, and this is only about a quarter of that size, that kind of bumps us down to about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet of disturbance on just this one lot, and probably less than that on the other. So our total disturbance would probably put us even under the 5,000-square-foot threshold. So we can, we can demonstrate that we can not only meet the requirements of the Riverfront Act, but we'll be so far underneath it, it will be, I think it'll help me maybe to feel a little bit better if I can, if I demonstrate that on the, on the plans.
It will require a variance for this work within, inside the 200 feet of the protected riverfront area.
No, it's not a variance. The only variance that you would ever have to apply for with the Conservation Commission would be anything between that 65 and, and the, or, well, the riverfront prohibits you from doing any work between the riverfront area and the 100-foot for new construction. There is some arguments you can make because this is already pre-developed lot, they kind of allow you an allowance for that, but we'll kind of set that aside, we're not even going to consider that. But, but the 100 to 200-foot is, it's an allowed buffer zone use, and like I said, you're allowed up to 5,000 square feet of disturbance within one activity, and you would, in this case, the DEP would review all of the aggregate and combined riverfront area for the entire site, because that's what they go back to and look at. It's not just that, this one particular lot. So we do have a very substantial amount of riverfront area that we could technically, under the Riverfront Act, without having to ask for variance. We're not, we're not allowed a variance for new construction anyway, it's just with what we would be allowed to do by right under a notice of intent application.
Good.
Yeah, I'll look into it further, but, yeah.
All right. Ms. Adillo?
I have no concerns at this time.
Ms. Williams?
No questions.
Mr. Cullen?
Good, sir.
And Mr. Gaskin?
How far off the road is the well?
I don't have a scale, but I can guesstimate that it, we're 51 feet to the proposed house, and the house is 30 feet wide, and we're about three-quarters of the way through that, so say 20, so we're about 70, 72 feet back maybe to the, and that's from the layout, and then from the travel, it's way probably another maybe five or six feet, so probably close to 80 feet back from Tremont Street where the edge of the pavement is.
Concern I have with, with the location of the well, and like I said, I don't really see where there's going to be any way to improve the situation much, but recommend, a recommendation would be to do some extensive water testing of the proposed well site with regards to VOCs and PFAS and things like that, given the closer nature to the road and where that well is going to be drawing water from, in the interest of protecting the residents there.
You all set, Mr. Gaskin?
Yeah, that's all, that's all I have to say.
All right, then. Again, I will ask for a motion to continue this.
Have we heard from the public on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, no, we've been, I wasn't sure.
Yep, one last time, I'm sorry. Absolutely. One last opportunity to come up, if anybody has come up with anything new that they would like to bring forward. Concern? Don't be shy now, Mr. Alberti. If you have a question, please come forward. I need your concerns. All right, thank you. All right, then. I'm going to ask that we can continue this to August 13th.
I'll make a motion to continue the special permit application of Derek Varley located at 278 Tremont Street in Carver to August 13, 2024, 7:00 p.m., Carver Town Hall, building Room 1.
Is that Ellen?
Ellen.
It's Ellen. She beat you to the punch, Bill. All right.
Ellen Callum, aye.
Mr. Shea, aye.
Yeah.
Ellen. Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Thank you.
Thanks, you have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's okay. Oh, man, I'm having an Ellen moment with my paper. You know what, Connie, I'm going to call, I need to myself. I'm going to call a five-minute recess. All right. We are back, can I say in session, to ask if any planning board members have notes at this time? Mr. Shea?
Old Home Day's coming up, Serpent, I believe, is supposed to be there, and we've got Star House and Production Plan.
Yep, so I'm going to talk about that in just a second, about how they're not going to be there.
Nope.
You're going to be there?
No, no, how Serpent is not going to be there.
Oh, they're not?
No. So, because I had a solar vendor who was going to talk about community gardens, who, like, are there things going around town? So I mentioned this to them, so apparently Old Home Day doesn't have vendors or particular types of vendors. So when, when Serpent said, yeah, we want to set up a table and talk about housing, they said no. So now we're scheduling, looking at going to National Police Night Out.
Yep.
Which is essentially by the week later, or usually it's August 2nd, August 3rd. But the other night, at the select board meeting, when I talked about the MBTA bylaw and the Housing Production Plan, I did mention that they would likely be there for Old Home Day, so I wanted to clear that, make sure, and we talked about tonight. And you noticed, well, let's go back to member notes, but they will not be there for Old Home Day, but they will be there for National Police Sign Out.
All right. Ms. Adillo? Ms. Williams? Mr. Cullen? And Mr. Gaskin? That's it? Then the floor is yours.
So the other night, some of you may have caught some of my discussion with the select board. A number of folks have been asking about the MBTA bylaw. I took it as an opportunity to talk about the Housing Production Plan and the MBTI bylaw, both in context. So in your package, you'll see a multicolored stapled thing together that talks about these particular issues. So one of the things I wanted to point out is, first off, we are in the midst of doing the survey still, so we always encourage folks to take the survey. There are hard copies of the survey at the Senior Center, there are also posters at Council on Aging, the library, as well as in the building here, for folks to take the Housing Production for folks to take the Housing Production Survey. And that survey is essentially to help identify the housing types that people in Carver are comfortable with and would prefer to help sort of inform our decisions moving forward with both zoning changes as well as developing zoning for the MBTA bylaw at some point in the future. So, as I talked about before, the Housing Production Plan is essentially, it's a snapshot of where we're at, where we'd like to go, and how we get there. So, the survey helps with some of that information. One of the things about a Housing Production Plan that people like is that they provide an opportunity for the town to be able to say no to a 40B. So, with an approved Housing Production Plan in production, the town could say no to a 40B. But the things that I talked about the other night is, Carver hasn't had a 40B in a very, very long time. I can't find a record of one. My theory is, is that at the time when I was in Falmouth, where we had three or four or five 40Bs going on on a regular basis, there was none in Carver when housing was hot and money was cheap. Prior to the Russian invasion of Ukraine, interest rates were as low as they've historically been forever. And with that, interest rate spike killed a lot of projects. But it seems unintuitive that there wouldn't be more of that sort of activity in Carver with those conditions. My theory is, is that because of the market rate units have to underwrite the cost of the affordable units, for a lot of developers, they look at and say, "I can't get enough money for the market rate units that I'm going to be providing to underwrite the cost of the affordable units." When I couple that with the fact that there's no municipal water, there's no septic systems, there's no sewage systems and things like that. So, a developer of any sort of substantial sort of development... And I kind of use the example of Edaville, where Edaville wanted to build 360-some-odd units. They would have to produce a house... They would have to have a wastewater treatment plant as well as a municipal water supply. And when you put all that math together, the cost to do this, the cost to do that, and what you're going to get out of it is the reason I think we've seen so few developments in Carver. So, with a Housing Production Plan, you can say no to a 40B were one to come along if you had an approved plan and there was production. You have to actually make units as part of this development scenario to have the plan and production in place. In the 2017 Housing Production Plan, they anticipated that there might be 95 new housing units built under rentals, 40Bs in the Village of the Business District. There were none. They thought maybe there'd be five tax titles, maybe there'd be 11 buy downs, maybe there'd be four rehabilitations. So, they anticipated between 2017 and 2021 that the town might see 150 units of production. They didn't. So, the fact that we have a housing need and we're not seeing it met through 40B, when we look at what might happen under the MBTA bylaw, I made this same exact presentation. Because what the MBTA bylaw is, it doesn't require the town to build anything. It requires the town to create zoning, to allow somebody to build something. And I talked about at the presentation that the areas where we've talked about in the master plan where are appropriate for development are the town center area, the village, Spring Street Innovation District, and the Green Business Park. So, those are the three areas the town has identified for housing types. Spring Street Innovation District and the Green Business Park, more for commercial uses, and those residential uses might likely wind up in the town center area, based on the master plan that we've done before. So, people are concerned, "Well, if we create the zoning, is our town going to be overrun?" And my opinion is, well, unlikely, for the reasons I just talked about, is that developers aren't looking at Carver as a place to make money, and builders don't build things out of the kindness of their heart. So, you're going to have to have a substantial amount of development in order to make something happen as far as housing and production goes. And then we look at what the MBTA bylaw is going to do. It's going to... It requires 175 towns to create zoning for multifamily housing. So, when we have a marketplace that says, "Here's 175 places a developer can build apartments," a lot of which are closer to transit, some of which are on municipal water, some of which are on municipal sewer systems, where do we think in the realm of all those opportunities in the marketplace with 175 different towns for developers to build things where they can make more money and there's more infrastructure, where do we think Carver's going to be on that list? Do we think Carver's going to be in that top 5%, that first town people come to after the zoning has changed? I think it's unlikely.
I'm thinking 176.
Well, I was going to go with the mid... I was going to go with the 160s, because Plumpton's north of us. I think, you know, I got friends in Plumpton, I'm sure they'll call.
All right, 177.
Okay. So, the fact that we have to create zoning, but we don't have to create infrastructure. We have to create an opportunity for the marketplace. So, that is the... That's the call for the MBTA zoning bylaw. Are we going to see that sort of development? Yeah, maybe, one of these days. But I think that there are a lot of other places that are going to see development. And frankly, by the time we get to that 175th town, chances are the zoning's going to change again. So, while I believe in the debate about should the town fight against doing the MBTA zoning bylaw, or should the town lean into creating the zoning for the MBTA bylaw, I think that we have a role to create, a role to play in creating opportunities for housing, for our loved ones who don't have a place to live in their community, and to create housing for each of us people to downsize to. Some of us don't want to live in that same house we've got, that oversized house, and they want to stay in Carver, but there are no places to move and downsize to. So, the opportunities we have here in Carver are very limited, but by creating the zoning, we may see some additional development, the sort of things we want to see, smaller units, different types of units. But I don't think it's on the horizon. I don't think it's on the periphery. So, given the option of creating zoning or saying no and paying town council to fight lawsuits against it, I think the most pragmatic way to go about this is to create the zoning. Allow something for the market that the market's unlikely to use for quite some time, for the reasons I've already pointed out, the values that developers can get, the lack of infrastructure, and just the fragmentation of the town center. We look at wetlands, we look at streams, we look at the parcels that we've got. The places I've talked about that are sort of the poster child for redevelopment are the grocery store down the street that's now a church. It gets used a couple times a week. That seems like a perfect place to say, "There's a higher and better use for housing here. Get rid of a lot of that asphalt. Get rid of a lot of that parking." Same thing with the fire station, the abandoned fire station next door, the EMT Academy up the street. These are already developed parcels that are things that make sense to be redeveloped because people are going to need a larger footprint for that. We talked about in my presentation the other night, you know, what might those houses sort of look like? These are some of the things we've seen before from the missing middle study. Now, this is what's called a manor house. It's a manor house. It's a small-scale multifamily that's supposed to look like a large home, usually one and a half to three stories. And the density for something like this is five to 12 dwelling units per acre. We see some of these structures here. We see things that sort of look like they could be the town hall here in Carver. It could be the library. So, when we look at creating zoning, that zoning we create may have these type of elements closer towards the street, and then deeper back into the property, maybe some denser elements. A second type of development in this missing middle, this middle density are walk-ups. Walk-ups are small-scale multifamily housings, which are completely comprised of a series of flats. These are usually two to three stories, eight to 12 units per acre, per building, and five to 25 dwelling units per acre. So, the things that we may see may not be alien to what we see in Carver. The only thing you want to do is make the street front look like the town, and as you get back into it, if the units have to be denser or larger or something like that, they may be to get to that point. So, we've got some work to do. We're in the midst of doing the survey right now to inform us. And frankly, you know, at the end of the summer, we're going to be looking at talking about the zoning for the MBTA bylaw and putting something on the warrant. Because as a transit-adjacent town, the town of Carver has to have zoning in place by December of 2025. So, we'll be looking at bringing some type of zoning to the town in the spring. One of the other things that I want to talk about is, we've had a zoning article recently removed from the warrant because somebody didn't like it. And the discussion was, "Well, you can't change a petitioned article, but we can change a town article." So, if the town planning board is concerned about creating the zoning and making sure that it's on the warrant, we might want to suggest, A, submitting it through the regular channels, and B, actually petitioning the zoning to make sure it's on the warrant. So, there's a discussion about it. Whether the town votes to approve it or not is up to the town. This type of zoning for housing isn't the two-thirds majority required for most zoning changes because of the changes to the state law. Zoning for housing is 50% plus one vote, so it's a lower threshold. So, I recommend that we move forward with the zoning. We create as opportunities for people that they may not use, and if necessary, petition them to make sure they're on the warrant so we can have the vote. And town meeting votes it down. That's their call.
So, what you're saying is that the planning board, in order to put forward a warrant article, needs to get 10 citizens' signatures and put it forth as a citizen's petition in order to make sure that it makes it on the warrant?
Yeah, and I use this example because the police... The fire chief in Kingston years ago needed a fire truck. He needed a pumper truck or something like that. John Alberghini, 38 years on the fire department, 25 years as the chief. And the FinCom said, "No, we don't want that," so it didn't go on the warrant. So, the next year, he put his fire truck out there, submitted it through the regular channels, and petitioned it. And he did this every year for the next 20 years. And every year, town meeting came to the point where the moderator would say, "All right, we're going to take up this article, and since the town has voted this article, we're not going to take up the petitioned articles. We just dealt with that." That was the fire chief's belt and suspenders model to make sure that what he needed to talk about, what he felt was to talk about, was required. I don't think it's necessary, but I'm just offering it out there because of this... Because of what happened at the last town meeting.
The planning board, in all essential and purposes, with that decision by the Select Board, removed almost all of our power. We don't have the power to... Which we do on the section 48, chapter 48, section 5, to put forward a warrant article that can only be amended or approved or rejected by town meeting, but that's been taken away from us. So, essentially, if the Select Board doesn't like what we're doing, our jobs, that they can remove any articles that we put forth is what they're saying. And frankly, it's not. And honestly, if I thought this town would do it, I would have put forth... I would have asked the board to take legal action against the Select Board, but I already know how that would go. And I don't want to sue the town, and I don't want to spend my money suing the town to protect itself, and I don't think this board does either. On the other hand, for all intents and purposes, the Select Board removed any powers that we had to put forth warrant articles from doing our job, from doing all the studying and all the work, all the classwork, all the symposiums. Bill's going to learn a lot this year, sitting on Serpeth. All that means nothing if they don't like it, and that is not appropriate.
Yeah, I'd like to think that's a one-off, but you noticed that I gave an option.
And you also... You stood up for it. You stood up for the planning board's authority and right. Mr. Bott did several times in our authority and right to put forth a warrant article. It was sent back to us. We followed the procedure, and for no comprehensible reason was given for removing it. So...
So, I just... As the planner, I lay the groundwork well in advance.
You did really well, Mr. Bott, and I thank you for that. If I haven't done it already, it's much appreciated that you stood up for the planning board.
They pay me to do that.
But that's... I'll let that go for now.
All right. So, HPP survey, not at Old Home Night, at the National Night Out.
National Night Out. At Carver High School.
At Carver High School.
But do we have a date? It must be coming up soon.
I think it's August 2nd, August 3rd.
Yeah, I think it's coming up fairly soon. It's a very family-oriented event. I hope a lot of people show up.
It's very well-attended.
Yes.
All right. We move to minutes. Or, Mr. Planner, I apologize. Were you done?
I'm done.
So, how do we want to take the minutes? I believe we have three.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes for May 28th, 2024. I can have a vote on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just got so used to having you part of everything.
I appreciate it. I want to.
Mr. Gaskin?
I haven't seen the minutes.
Mr. Gaskin was absent, so I will start with Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea, yes, says aye.
Ellen Sodilla says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2024, which was, I believe, our town meeting minutes?
Oh, that was town meeting night, right? Chairman? Mr. Shea?
I don't think we have a second.
What's that?
All right, I'll second that.
Oh, you did?
No, but I am now. Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodilla says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Do it. Mr. Gaskin?
I'll make...
You were there.
Yes, you were.
I haven't seen the minutes.
Oh, okay. So, do we have to hold on to those? Or Mr. Gaskin didn't see them, or?
No, staying.
Well, I believe minutes are emailed to everyone, and some people have requested hard copies. I know you have, Kevin. I usually have a copy of them, but to save us from printing 60 pages of minutes.
Yeah. I thought that I had requested hard copies because I have part-time getting through the email.
All right. You can add those.
All right. And can I have a motion to accept the minutes of June 11th?
Do you have a copy of the motion of the minutes of June 11th, Mr. Gaskin?
No, I do not.
I'd be more than happy to give you mine.
Then I would recommend...
They were very brief.
Putting it off till next meeting.
That was one prior to town meeting.
Yeah, we were not approving the minutes before town meeting because it says I was there.
June 4th?
June 4th.
The hallway meeting?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I recommend...
We table those?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to... We'll rescind the motion and table those.
So, we got 5:28. We approved.
Yeah.
Fabulous. All right, we'll do the other ones at the next meeting.
And I will correct. Rescind my motion. Rescind your second.
I rescind your second. It's official.
So, we can take care of it right now that, Mr. Bott, you were not there.
So, we got you, Connie, and Mary Ellen over there. And there is a note... There is a note to correct the spelling on your...
Yes.
Spelling of your name with a minute's time.
I'm pretty sure Mr. Gaskin was there, and you were there, so...
Yeah, everybody was there except for Mr. Bott.
I think we'll need a little time to go over them.
Yeah. Let's... Oh, excuse me. I'm reading the wrong minutes. Shoot.
Oh, there was the other minute.
Oh, you were looking at June 11th.
I was, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, those look bad. Not that I vote. I know how you feel.
I know how you feel, but.
All right. So we tabled June 4th, or are we tabling, we tabled June 4th then? Even though that was only a paragraph and Mr. Gaskin read it? We're gonna.
If Mr. Gaskin's comfortable with it.
Did you feel comfortable reading that, John?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We just had to make a correction that.
All right. Then can Connie's motion stand, or do we have to ask for a new one?
I'll make the new motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2024.
Thank you.
Second. Second.
John says aye. You feel the second?
I thought we needed a second.
You did second, yes.
You did second it, and now I'm just asking you for your aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Formalities.
That was very easy.
That's usually not me that can, that can get that right. Usually I get that whole thing confused. And are we gonna, is everybody, you didn't see the, you didn't get the elevens then, John, I'm assuming?
No.
Okay, so I'll give you this, we'll table the elevens. Can I get a motion to table the 11th?
So motion, oh, you don't need.
Okay.
A motion. If there's an issue, you, you can do it without just.
All right then. How about a motion for a meeting to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye. So we have a bylaw.